Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this Tuesday, May 7th, regular meeting. Sorry if we're starting a little late. That's completely our meeting, but we have a lot to cover today, so we'll go ahead and get started. Commissioner Crum, can you lead us in prayer and pledge today, please?
Yes. Dear heaven and father, we thank you for your day. We thank you for putting us in the position we are to serve our county. Lord, we ask you to let us put you first and do what's best for our county. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Praise be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands: one nation, united in God, indivisible, and infinite, just as far.
All right. At this point, we're looking to approve the agenda. Attorney Schuler, you said you had something to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The City of Apalachicola attorney, Mr. Dan Harpman, contacted me about a week and a half ago, indicated that his client wants to donate some property that they own next to the Armory. As I understand it, that would be the area that's fenced in beside the Armory building. And I was getting ready to prepare the deed and send it to the City of Apalachicola, but I think I need to address this matter with the board first, so I have held off on preparing and delivering that deed. So I would like to add to the agenda an action item for the board to consider the acceptance of the offer by the City of Apalachicola to donate the property that I've just described.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Rowan, or we're good?
No, sir. I think we're good. Otherwise, to that, just remind everyone the times on the agenda are all approximate. There are no public hearings today, so there are no Commissioner Sanders, there are no time certain items today. So we try our best to keep the schedule, sir.
Well, do know this, whatever we push, it's designed for us to be done with certain things by lunch, but if we push, it's going to be after lunch. So just make, you know, it's timed for a purpose. Well, with that, are there any, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda with what the Attorney Schuler has presented here this morning?
If a move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Up next is pay the county bills and approve the minutes.
Same move.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders, to pay the county bill list that's been presented today and to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on April the 2nd of this year. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Up next is public comments. I'm just pulling in the order. I have them here. Was it Kristi McElroy? Did I say that right? Please come forward, state your name. You have five minutes.
Okay. Kristi McElroy. I live in Port St. Joe. I have been in the Panhandle, grew up in Bay County since 1968. Graduated from Florida State. Have a second home over in Tallahassee. I love the Panhandle. I worked for a biotech company out of California and had many chances to move to California, but I love the simplicity and the nature and all of our assets here and the people of the Panhandle. What I see are, there are a lot of people out there that are doing what companies do. They try to come into areas, the last bastion of opportunity, and swing their will in order to make money. I understand that, but it, our government, of course, is the checks and balances on that. Does it work? Does it work for our environment? Does it work for who we are? I want to personally thank you all for your opposition to this drilling. I was born in Louisiana. I loved Louisiana. I lived in North Louisiana, and we were able to run free. It was a wonderful first beginning of my childhood. But there are things in Louisiana that are not positive. And what they've done to a lot of the landscape, as I wrote to Senator Simon yesterday, they've made it a man-made wasteland in areas that didn't need to be a wasteland. So I'm here today to thank you and also encourage your population to continue to send letters to the senator. He's putting himself out there. And I called his office yesterday and I spoke to Stephen. I said, what can we do? Send letters, Kristi. Send them to us, because the senator is going to be the one to really step up and push back on this. So, as I said, I love the Panhandle, and to me, we're all neighbors. In Port St. Joe, we pull our water off the Chipola. So we don't need to see a precedent set with drilling, because you allow it once, it's only going to continue because they're going to ask, why'd you say yes to them but not to us? We got a whole DEP responsible in Northwest Florida Water Management District. You guys had to work with them in 2007 about your water and what you were going to do, as did we. We got to stand strong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like later on in the commissioners' comments to, for you to address some stuff on the, on the drilling stuff. I just hope it could be a word that I'm going to ask you some questions and ask some comments.
Ms. Nandamang, please come forward, station him for the record. You have five minutes.
Good morning, commissioners. Nandamang, 1480, Alligator Point. As you may recall, I presented to the Board of Commissioners last November some safety concerns regarding parking at the Chip Morrison Beach Access on Alligator Point. I'm here today to say thank you, Commissioner Sanders.
You're welcome.
Mr. Neighbors, and the board for addressing these safety concerns. Commissioner Sanders, we do appreciate your follow-through, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nang.
Thank you, Nanda.
I think this one's on the line. I don't seem to remember. Ms. Mel Kelly?
Yes, she is.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Mel Kelly. I live at 1306 Owens Avenue in Carabelle. I thank you for your attention this morning. I ask that you consider making a special request to District 3 of the State Department of Transportation on behalf of roadside park signage for the lovely little Island View Park located between Carabelle and Lanark. Because the park is located in the midst of a very curvy stretch of Highway 98, both east and westbound, passing drivers are often unaware of this little gem with its docks, porta potty, and scenic overlook. While I don't believe the county can install such signage, perhaps a request from the commission might alert FDOT to the opportunity to identify this wonderful park with some "Park Ahead" signs, both east and westbound. In reviewing the highway signs library, I believe that the Wildlife Viewing Sign could be a good consideration. I have seen roadside park or wayside park signs elsewhere, but they are not in the FDOT library as yet. Perhaps we could encourage them to consider such a sign designation. Also, thank you for your public comments near the beginning of the meeting. It shows your respect for the public you serve, and I want you to know how much I appreciate the location of the public comments segment. Thank you for your time and consideration of my special request on behalf of visitors to that beautiful and scenic roadside park. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. All right, Mr. Rowan, that's all the ones I had. Those all submitted.
Yes, sir.
All right. Clerk, Michelle Maxwell, put to you.
Good morning. Michelle Maxwell, clerk of court. Pursuant to Florida Statute 1975027, the clerk is tasked to notify the county commission when there were no bidders on county held tax certificates that went to public tax deed sales. I'm going to have to move this up. Hold on just a minute. Yeah. The list attached is the county held tax certificates that have been advertised for sale. Sales were held on March 4th, 2024, and there were no bidders. These properties are available should the county wish to purchase them, or you can waive your rights to purchase them at this time, and they will be placed on the list of lands available for sale. If not purchased, they will be excheated to the county after three years. I have attached the list plus a copy of the forms on each tax deed for the chairman to sign on whether you, you elect to purchase or not. So the board action has requested a motion to elect to purchase or not to purchase these properties. And I've got a list of all of the parcels, and I don't, we probably could have put it on the screen, but if you're not familiar, the counties that were awarded to the county after the three years excheated, I think it was a month ago.
Yep.
It's in the city of Carabelle, but these are the properties that you own now. I don't know if you can see this, but the properties that I'm talking about today are these properties down here, which is not real close, but it's in the area. And that's Highway 67 here. But I've looked up the properties, and it says that they're unbuildable lots, so.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to say the same thing. I researched this last week, and I noted the same thing on the property appraisers' website. These are unbuildable lots, even if they do go to the, to, if we, we say we waive it, which I'm, I'm for waiving purchasing that. I think it's not prudent on our part to purchase them. I don't think anybody else is going to purchase them either, because they're unbuildable lots, and it will do no good for them to purchase them. So I'm going to make a motion to deny the purchase of this, waive our right to purchase this property, these properties.
I'll second that motion with a comment.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders, to elect not to purchase the above-mentioned property on the list of lands available for taxes.
Okay. What it was, we have been going through this, I think, about six months now that we were aware of that, and, you know, you do see the lots that's owned by the county. I just want to make sure that we don't do anything that in the future we could possibly use. But it's like Commissioner Ward said, these are unbuildable, because they're in the middle of that main drain and that swamp over there in that area off of Fifth Street in Carabelle. So that's just my comment, Mr. Chairman.
I want to make sure what we're looking at. Is it the ones that have got the red Xs are the ones we're talking about?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And they're all unbuildable, or they're mostly unbuildable?
Do you have this with you?
I do.
Okay. So yes, these are the properties that you already own here, and this, these are the properties right here that are in question.
Right. Well, I know the ones down that looks like they're on the south side are definitely unbuildable. I can see water.
Yes.
But there's some going up toward the north. Are they all unbuildable?
Yes, every one of them. Yeah, and there's no access there either.
Mr. Chairman, even on the property appraisers' website, if you go to View Map- Mr. Chairman, even on the property appraiser's website, if you go to View Map, there's no map to view because there's no, it's almost like there's no land to view, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you can actually pull up the, I think it was the one with the parcel 100, the very first one. If you pulled that one up, then you can find the others because if you click on the others, you can't find out exactly where it's at. But you will click on the next ones, then you'll see it. They'll pop up.
That, that explains what I went through then trying to find them.
Yeah, yeah, you can see the other ones, but you can, you can access it through clicking on the 100 parcel.
Mr. Chairman, you really wouldn't want to mess with that because that's part of that natural drain that goes through Carabelle.
Yes.
And that's what we've been, you know, the WIT has been out there spraying and trying to get it draining. That attaches to all of it. If you see all them little ponds and lakes, that's all part of the, that area and it's part of that drainage area. And I, I would hope we would never, nobody would ever build on it because if you do, you're going to have a drainage problem then.
Yes.
But it ma, it makes its loop and goes out through Smokey Hollow and goes on underneath 98 and out to around Blue McQuist Channel and that, so.
Yeah. Let, let me ask more questions, please, Clerk Maxwell. So just like we're doing with other properties, we were, we turned down the option to purchase. If they're not purchased, they'll eventually go to the county anyway, correct?
In three years, yes.
And the only reason I make mention of that is to make sure we are aware of that. Number two, like Commissioner Sanders said, would it be in part of the main drainage? I mean, even if it is unbuildable, I would, I'm fine with what the Board wants to do, but I would be more comfortable with us on it that way we know that drain's not going to be messed with. So, you know what I mean? But we'll see how it turns out.
Yeah, I feel that same way, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next up, I have a fixed asset disposal request pursuant to Florida Statute 27406, Alternative Procedure. Having consideration for the best interests of the county or district, a governmental unit's property that is obsolete or continued use of which is uneconomical or inefficient or which serves no useful function, which property is not otherwise lawfully disposed of, may be disposed of for value to any person or may be disposed of for value without bids to the state, to any governmental unit or to any political subdivision as defined in Section 101. Or if the property is without commercial value, it may, may be donated, destroyed, or abandoned. The determination of the property to be disposed of by a governmental unit pursuant to this section instead of pursuant to other provisions of law shall be at the election of such governmental unit in the reasonable exercise of its discretion. The value of which the governmental unit estimates to be under $5,000 may be disposed of in the most efficient and a cost of, and cost-effective means as determined by the governmental unit. Any seller property, the value of which the governmental unit estimates to be $5,000 or more, shall be sold only to the highest responsible bidder or by a public auction. After publication of notice, not less than one week nor more than two weeks prior to sale in a newspaper having a general circulation in the county or district in which is located the official office of the governmental unit and in additional newspapers, if the judgment of the governmental unit, the best interests of the county or district will be better be served by additional notices, provided that nothing herein contained shall be construed to require the sheriff of a county to advertise the sale miscellaneous contraband of an estimated value of less than $5,000. So I'm asking for Board Action approval to dispose fixed assets determined to be obsolete and valued less than $5,000. And the assets are, I've got a list of computers that are obsolete from the Health Department and also computers from the Tax Collector's Office that are obsolete as well. And all of the information has been removed from the hard drive, so it's just the shell of the computers.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation made by the clerk.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Maxwell. Captain Brad Segrey, Sheriff's Office. Here to talk about barnacles of a different sort, right?
Yes, sir, we are. Good morning, Commissioners. As you stated, I'm Brad Segrey. I'm one of patrol captains, of course, for the Sheriff's Office. And I'm, I'm going to speak really brief before I turn it over to Mr. Michael Hadley, who is the Vice President of Barnacle Solutions. But as you all know, we battle parking issues on Alligator Point and it's something we've been battling now for, for years. We have tried towing, we've tried ticketing, we've talked about booting cars. Uh, we've, we've talked about all types of activities to try to control these illegal parking issues. Uh, the sheriff tasked myself, along with Major Colder, the other captains at the Sheriff's Office to try to come up with something that we could use that, that would make it easier for Madam Clerk and her office to take care of fines and, and issues of that nature. We run across the Barnacle, the Barnacle Enforcement Solutions. And it's, it's a really cool device. What it's going to do is attach to the windshield of vehicles that are parked illegally. Uh, it takes just, just minutes for an officer to deploy the Barnacle. Uh, and the individuals that are parked illegally, it literally will take just minutes for them to remove it once they pay the fine. I foresee that it's going to curb our issues on Alligator Point. But one question and request that I would have for the Commission is simply, right now, our, our ordinance violation, if, if they're parked illegally, that fine is only $25. I would ask that a, that you guys consider upping that amount at least to the, to a non-moving, uh, amount of $108 that I guess the county already has for non-moving violations. But that would give us a little more teeth in the matter. But I do foresee an issue starting to take place on St. George Island as well. When we get all of our parking developed over there in our beach access areas on St. George, we're going to start battling parking issues on St. George as well. So it's not just geared towards Alligator Point, although that's where we're battling it right now. And when we talk about parking issues, it's, uh, in our minds, it's, it seems to be really low on the totem pole, if you will, of issues. But on Carlton Millander Road where I live in Carabelle, I never see it. I never have an issue with parking around Carlton Millander Avenue. But our homeowners, our residents of Alligator Point, it's something right now they see daily. And it causes a traffic hazard. It causes issues when they're coming and going on Alligator Drive at all of our beach accesses, which of course are only three parking spaces. So this is a cool tool. I really like the name. All of us know, like you said, Chairman, is, is, uh, we all know what a barnacle is and that's, again, a cool name. So at this time, I'll, I'll turn it over to Michael Hadley or Hadley, who's the Vice President of Barnacle Enforcement Solutions. He's got a, a short slide presentation that he'd like to show.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Captain Segrey. Uh, thanks, Commissioners, Chairman. Hope everyone's doing okay. For respect of time, how much time do I have to walk through this?
Uh, we should have been handling about 15, 20 minutes, shouldn't we?
Okay, no, that's plenty. I don't need that much time, so, but I'll obviously, if there's questions, please feel free to, to ask. So, um, yeah, as a, as a frequent, actually, St. George vacationer, uh, I, I understand the parking challenges y'all, y'all deal with down there, especially Alligator Point, the island itself and other areas. So we are, Barnacle's been around since 2017 and we are a much, I would say, safer, easier, and efficient way of immobilizing and ticketing vehicles. But with that, you know, we today partner with folks that deal with all kinds of parking problems, you know, major cities, universities, police departments, hospitals, property management, real estate, any and everyone who handles parking are folks that generally use Barnacle as an easier alternative way to booting or towing. But with that, we obviously believe in, you know, three main principles of parking, right? We're not just like any other solution out there that sells you devices and, you know, never hear from us again, right? We, we think everyone should obviously respect parking rules, but we think they should be treated fairly when they don't. And there obviously should be certain ramifications and things happening for violating those parking rules because those obviously are necessary or their parking problems will persist. Um, and we also think people should be responsible for parking. Um, but they, but there should be a safer, easier way to do that for both the folks that are putting the devices on the vehicle, but also a safer, easier way for the motorists to get a certain device off their vehicle and go about their way. You're probably wondering like who we work with, where we came from, all that. So there are a lot of different municipality clients, government entities we work with. Um, hopefully everyone can see the slides okay, but all across, you know, the, the coast of Florida, you know, seaside, City of West Palm Beach, City of Pompano Beach, Hallandale Beach. Uh, we just launched with the NYPD up in New York. So a lot of these folks have persistent parking problems similar to you all that are using the Barnacle for an easier and efficient way to immobilize vehicles but also enforce the parking safely. I'm going to talk to you how this works because again, it's, it's new. There's really nothing else out there and the name Barnacle is obviously what you think it is, just like a barnacle from the ocean that attaches to a boat. This is a device that attaches to the windshield. So instead of anyone having to actually get on their hands and knees, you know, spend two to three minutes attaching a boot to a, a vehicle. Uh, this device weighs about 16, 17 pounds. One person can deploy it and carry it and it covers the entire windshield to where the person who is driving the vehicle cannot see out of their windshield. And there are different things that happen if someone were to try, um, crazy things to get the device off or to move their vehicle. So really, it's as simple as if you've identified that person that has parked in a no-parking zone or parked illegally on the street or where have you for Alligator Point, for example. All the Sheriff's Office has to do, or those that are putting the devices on the vehicle, walks up to the vehicle, places it on the windshield, and they can either use a key to manually arm the device or Barnacle also comes with a tech, technology component with our app and dashboard that allow you to capture all the vehicle information from the make and model, the license, the license plate. You know, you can take pictures of the vehicle through the app and obviously capture all the fine details that you're going to be presenting that motorist with. And then once you arm that device, whether that's through the app or the key, it is going to deliver 1,000 pounds of force to the windshield. So the device is fully sucking on the windshield and the only safe and effective way to remove it is that motorist has to actually go into the device, pay their fine, and have the device removed. And so this is where some of that ease of use and safety comes into play. You know, obviously with booting or towing today, typically, you know, obviously officers have to get on their hands and knees. Um, motorists have to wait typically for someone to come out, remove the boot, pay a fine, or if their car gets towed, of course, they have to go through that process of paying that towing fee, trying to go locate their vehicle, deal with all that at the tow yard. In this case, one, it's safer from the aspect of putting it on, but it's also safer from the aspect of limiting some motorist interaction. Um, I, you know, I've been booted before. I don't think anyone likes having things like this stuck to their vehicle. So I'm sure anyone could get frustrated, but the concept here is, and where Barnacle is unique, is you can take out the interaction and once the device is placed on the vehicle, the motorist can go through the prompts of paying whatever their fine is and then going through the process of actually removing the device and returning it to a secure and safe location, um, once it's off their windshield. So what we do to help with that is we work with, we would work with Franklin County or the Sheriff's Department to create custom labels that would go on the device. Uh, it would be simple instructions for the motorists. They could go through the process of scanning a QR code, going to a web link. Uh, we can even do a phone number if they wanted to, um, to call to make a payment. And then what's going to happen is they're going to be presented with their fine options, you know, the, the violation type, what the fine amount is. And then essentially, they're going to have to pay through the Barnacle in order to get the next steps of what needs to happen to remove the device. Now, you might have some questions of like, well, what happens if they pay for it, remove it, and never return it? Or they damage it? On top of their violation fine, they will also be responsible for a refundable deposit. We set that amount at $300, which essentially is covering the costs of us sending you a new device should the issue come up where they never return it or they remove it and damage it for whatever reason. So in this example, this violation fine is $100. They're going to pay a $300 refundable deposit. So they're going to enter a, a payment of $400. And then once they do that, they will get a custom text, however you want that worded, with specific instructions of what to do. So they'll get a release code, a four-digit release code. They will plug that into the keypad of the device and then it will, it will give them in the text instructions as well of what to do with the device, where to return it in order for their deposit to be refunded, um, to their bank account. And once they take it off and return it, they can go about their way. And there's no, limited to no officer interaction whatsoever. And I would also say all these devices come with GPS tracking. So the Sheriff's Office, anyone's going to know where the devices are at at all times, when they're deployed, when they're not deployed. They come with tamper alarms. So anytime a motorist tries to mess with the device, you know, remove it, shake it, do anything, it's going to ring a very loud alarm on the device. And through the technology, it will notify the specific users at the Sheriff's Office or whoever wants to be notified that a motorist is tampering with the device. And in the weird case where someone may try something as crazy as to drive off with it or move their vehicle, it also has motion sensors that will also ring an alarm and notify the necessary people that someone is trying to move their vehicle. So there's a lot of other layers of protections in place that prevent people from trying things, but also alert the necessary people to act on something that is happening, um, in order to prevent something worse, um, a worse situation occurring. Um, again, I talked about this, but these are some of the core benefits and why other municipalities' police departments use it, right? The improved enforcer safety. So again, it takes a matter of, uh, up to 30 seconds actually to deploy the Barnacle on a vehicle. Um, you can do it standing on two feet. Obviously, you have clear sight of oncoming traffic, um, when it's being deployed and obviously when it's being released. And then of course, in the case where you want to fully take out the interaction of dealing with motorists, there's no enforcer interaction needed whatsoever. Compliance is a big one. You know, it's a big yellow device. It's very visible on a windshield. You know, boots sometimes are tougher to see because they're on wheels. Um, so typically, when you see these on a windshield or other motorists seat on the windshield, it usually helps with compliance and helps folks know that there's parking regulations in place and it's, it, it, uh, a good deterrent for other people who may try to attempt the same parking method that, that one person did as well. And then I would say from like a motorist satisfaction standpoint, right? Again, I'd mentioned this earlier. No one likes to get things on their vehicle. No one likes to get booted. No one likes to sit around waiting, uh, for people to come out or, you know, risk damaging their vehicle. So the motorist satisfaction side of it to where they can release it, they can return the device themselves and get back on their way in a matter of minutes versus hours is a lot more successful and a lot more happier, um, for a motorist in a situation where they get a device like this, um, on their vehicles. This, and this is the last piece here. So, you know, sometimes people always wonder like where do the devices go and they return them? You know, some of our municipalities or police departments, they have them return them to certain precincts or the Sheriff's Office. In other cases, we provide what we call the Dropbox. Think of it as just like a post office return box. So when the, when the motorist gets that text and they return, and they get the device off, it will instruct them, instruct them of where to take the device and where the Dropbox is located. And all they'll have to do is fill the device up, slide it into this yellow box here, and go about their way, um, off the parking lot or where they need to go for the rest of the day. And then through the GPS tracking and other notifications that the, uh, certain users will get, they'll, they'll know where that device is at and they'll be notified when the motorist has actually paid and released the device and they can go pick up the devices in the box, um, as their, you know, as their schedule allows. That was really all I had on a stint of kind of how Barnacle works. You know, we, we are a service on top of just providing parking technology and devices. So, you know, we fully set up, um, all of our customers. Um, you'll meet our team, we'll understand your parking environment, we'll set up your account, we'll work with you on any marketing-related needs. So if there's communications you want to send out to residents, if there's things you want to put on your website about new parking programs for Barnacle, those are all things we offer as part of our service. We fully train the team on how to use the device. We fully train the team on how to use the device. We go through test deployments, different situations, different use cases for the Barnacle of how to deploy it. And then all of our customers are of course assigned a dedicated account manager and customer success representative. So, you know, at the same time, you're, you're getting a parking enforcement technology on top of a service that we're providing as a whole.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Commissioner?
I had like five of them, but he was able to answer most of them. Do you have, his name Mike, right?
Yes, Sir Michael.
Mike. Do you have the percentage of people or offenders that actually drove off with, with your product?
So it's happened probably a handful or less of times. I would say in every case that has happened, they've either been arrested or it's been traced back to the police station. All the devices too also say on them, you know, this is a mobilization device, please not move your vehicle. And with the custom labels we create, a lot of the other police departments we work with, you know, they have some specific language about what were to happen if they tried to damage or move the vehicle. Obviously, other criminal charges could occur depending on how you wanted to do that, but there's been very few instances where folks have tried to actually drive off with the device.
Got you. Okay. Captain?
Yes, sir.
With this product, I'm assuming y'all will do this in conjunction with proactive enforcement still?
Yes, sir.
What's the cost of this?
We, I'll probably let Mr. Handley give you that information. From what I understand, each device is, is going to be on a monthly basis. We do have a quote. I didn't bring that over with me today, but Mr. Handley may have that information.
I do. It's right here. So correct, it's a, it's a subscription service due to just all the service and technology involved, but it's, it's either, we present it both ways. I mean, it's, it's 3,000 per device annually, which is 250 per device per month. And then typically with the Dropbox, we include with a certain number of, of devices. But the, what happens is that, that's all you are responsible for. The fines you're collecting through the, through the parking violations, those will go back to the, the county. And however you want to do those funds to help with any sort of ticket revenue or unpaid parking fines, but you're just paying Barnacle based off how many devices you're contracted with.
Clerk Maxwell. What is the current cost of non-moving infractions for our county?
It's a hundred and eight dollars.
Okay. I, when I was with sheriff office, I would intentionally assign myself to Alligator Point to address the parking issue. It is an issue out there, always been. I feel that we need to increase the fine for, for that enforcement. Twenty-five dollars. Spring breakers, I used to deal with those all the time, Panama City Beach. You know, when we go to this conference, we pay $30 for parking. And the way they view it, as I heard before, is hey, it's just, it's just $35, just $25. We're just paying it. So I do believe that we need to increase the fine to at least non-moving, which is 108. And once we start inconvenience, inconvenience, the violator, we will, we will see progress.
Absolutely, sir.
Funding, where would the funding come from?
Can we talk about that, Michael?
No, I'm not. I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir. Funding, where would the funding come from for this? For this? Oh, I'll let Aaron, Aaron's on line from Eastport. Aaron, you want to jump in and say the asking about the funding for it? She might not be paying attention.
Oh, I imagine she is paying attention.
Or she's looking for the answer, Commissioner. Let me put it that way.
That's all I had.
She can, she can answer that.
While she's looking on, on answers some things that maybe you guys are thinking about that we know from, I was able to sit in with Clerk Maxwell and we did a, like a pre-meeting before today to make sure there were any glaring questions that need to be answered before we were presented here today. So there's not a, there's, I'm told there's not an issue with where the vehicle's located as far as Wi-Fi or being able to connect with an app. It's a really lower bandwidth it requires to, to do what's needed on this app. So that, I thought that was good because we don't have great service all over Franklin County.
Right.
And the other thing is there was a discussion we had with, and this is more of training for the sheriff's office. So if you have an offender that's parked illegally and they have a window that's cracked, well, they're not getting a Barnacle on their window, we'll have to do something different. Because we're not going to put something on there that could lead to them having window damage. So that's part of employing the devices, inspecting the windshield, making sure it's a good solid windshield and then you can employ a device.
That was my question right there because I saw the video that Officer Culver sent and to start with. And it showed the officer out there examining the windshield and everything because it said you had to be very precise how you put it on. If there's any crack, you may potentially make it crack worse. So who's going to be responsible? You know what I'm saying? So that, that's the only thing concerned me. There is a parking problem out there. There had been a parking, parking problem out there. Will we ever solve it? I don't know. But, you know, you tried the boots on the tires, that didn't work, you know? So let's, let's try this. I mean, I don't have no problem with it as long as the liability is with the company and, you know, the, the person. So I just don't want it to come back and be a liability for the county.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a couple of questions I'm going to throw out. One is, we were talking about cost and where the funding is going to come from. I know we got the cost of the Barnacles. I don't know how many Barnacles you guys would start out with.
Right now, we've got a quote for six.
Okay, so you get a free Dropbox with six Barnacles, correct?
With, with every three, I believe he said he provides a Dropbox.
Yes, ma'am. That's right.
I guess the question also would be, and I agree with Commissioner Crum in terms of increasing that fine because, you know, we got to hit them in their pocket if they're going to improve and do better. But the question is, and for Clerk Maxwell, if you can't answer it, that's okay. Is this, is this going to be okay for your office to be able to easily handle these payments and things like that?
As long as, we, we actually had the meeting. As long as I can get, receive a ticket, I still need to receive a ticket. We can put that in our computer and I was, it wasn't this gentleman we were talking to, it was another representative. But he indicated that we could get maybe a payment twice a, a week. It wouldn't benefit us to do a monthly payment because once we get a ticket, we have three days to get everything in our system. So we would need that ticket and that payment to match up within three days. So if they could get us the payment, I believe within, you know, week, two payments a week and then we get the tickets, I don't foresee a problem. But we still need a physical ticket in case somebody wants to elect to go to court on the ticket.
And that was something we talked about. We, we would develop a specific citation that would correspond with the traffic issues or excuse me, the parking issues that again, would have our ordinance number on it, have the fine amount and all of those things that, that would be sent over to, to the clerk's office.
Okay, my next question is in terms of funding, this Barnacle system could potentially pay for itself over a certain amount of time depending upon how much, how much is it charged to get the Barnacle off? It says 400. I guess it, is it one flat fee, 108 dollars?
If, if we agreed to up our fine amount for illegal parking to the non-moving infraction, it would be 108 dollars. Now, as Mr. Handley said, there's also a required deposit of 300 dollars. So in total, at the time of you getting the Barnacle off of your vehicle would be a 408 dollar fine, if you will, with a refundable amount of 300. So again, I, I know with 25 dollars, like the commission said, you know, they're, they're willing to pay that every day and twice on Sunday to park on Alligator Point. If we get in that wallet, as you said, Commissioner, is, is, that's what's important. And I think that that in itself is going to reduce. Now eventually, a lot of our spring breakers, mom and dad is going to foot that bill. But mom and dad need to teach these youngsters, they need to be more responsible of where they park.
And then one more question, Mr. Chairman. It says batteries on these things. Who's, who's going to be responsible for, do you have to have a battery charger? Do you replace the batteries?
Right. And I, and I think that's something that would coincide with some training, Commissioner. They are rechargeable. I'm sure Mr. Handley could, could speak to that as well, no doubt. But, but there would be someone that would have to be responsible for periodic maintenance, charging and what have you on the device.
That, that's right. So they are chargeable. They, they charge with any normal outlet, just like a cell phone would. You know, they, they fully charge in about an hour and a half or so, but I would say a fully charged device, it can last up to seven days on a vehicle. So there's really no issue with it, the battery going out. We just, and you also will always have, through the dashboard, you'll always see what the battery life is for each device. And then when the devices get down to a certain battery life, you can also get texts or email notifications that a device has hit a certain point so when, so you know when to charge it. And then we do have different work clothes and trainings we do of like a battery swap or what happens if for some reason it was, it forgot to be charged and it was on a vehicle and the battery was, was slowly losing its life.
Thank you.
One comment. Brad, would this, if we agree to it, would this be in compliance with the Uniform Traffic Code? Would it be in compliance with that?
Ms. Cheryl, I would have to do a little more research to be able to answer that and not say something out of, out of turn.
And let me just say this, when the sheriff called me and asked me or said that we had a problem out there, I said, well, it's new because we've always had a problem out there. And I said, Sheriff, I said, you all do that business. I don't. Come up with something that you can get you guys to come up with something and bring it back to us. So this is how we got here. It's the Sheriff's Department, County Commission working together on it. So, you know, I, I, let's, let's try it and see how it goes. I mean, that's the only thing we can do.
Sounds good to me.
All right, Mr. Chairman. So, yes, Aaron is, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead and let Aaron answer.
Aaron is asking, what, what was the total cost again as she looks for funding source?
It was 3,000 dollars, it looked like.
3,000? Okay. Annually. And before she jumps in, I'll just let you know that there are a couple of, Aaron, you could go ahead and jump in, but there are a couple of.
It's per device, too.
Okay. Already got a couple of texts from county employees that say, well, what if we don't have 400 dollars in our account at that moment? That mean we lose access to our car? You're parking illegally?
Yeah, don't park illegally.
Okay. All right, Aaron, it's all yours.
Okay. Hey there, Michael. Sorry, Michael Handley. Sorry, not, not experienced with Zoom. But as far as the outlay, so the initial outlay would be 3,000 dollars and that would actually provide how many Barnacle devices, just one?
Yeah, that's per, per device and that's an annual, you can pay annually or monthly for the devices. So it's either 250 per device per month or 3,000 per device per year.
Oh, okay. Okay. Now would there be any sort of contract? Like can we, are we able to actually try the devices for this season? Let's say if we do it on a monthly basis, see if it works?
It is. There typically is a 12-month commitment when folks come on to use the Barnacle.
Okay. Well, that, that sounds good. And as far as any, any other fees besides the monthly fee for the, for the unit?
No, there is a, so there's a couple of things. If you, if you pay monthly, we, the only requirement is the first three months of service upfront, which is essentially that just helps us get everything set up for you. And then after that, month four, you would just be billed for the number of devices. But that's really the only applicable fees that typically apply.
Okay. And that also includes the, the return kiosk and such?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then also, this question is for Brad. How many units exactly is the sheriff's department looking for?
Currently, we have on our quote six units. And as time passes, we may need only three or we could need as many as 12 at this point, Ms. Erin. We, you know, we wanted to start with six and just see how it works for us.
Okay, so do you?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, I did, I did fail to mention, I think it's, I think it's on the captain's quote there. There are shipping, there are other shipping related fees that should be broken out on the, I don't know if that's on the quote, but I can provide those as well just for the devices, but that's the only thing I meant to mention.
Okay, so on your quote, what is, what is the total provided? I'm, I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't seen the captain's quote yet.
Ms. Erin, I, I don't have that. It was actually sent to Major Culver. I don't have that information with me.
I can break, so I can send one, another one, but it would be a total of 1,500 dollars per month for six devices.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get the invoice too, just so I can know. Because 3,000 annually to 1,500 dollars a month, well, it's kind of confusing as to under, I know we're paying for the devices, we're paying for the annual, I guess, subscription. I know there's a lot of things at play. And then the, the kiosk, which I, says you get one free box with, one free kiosk, I guess, with six Barnacles. So, yeah, I think a breakdown would be good for all of us so we can understand it a little bit better. I mean, I, I think it's a great idea. Don't get me wrong. Definitely got to do something, but I think that from our perspective, from the board's perspective, we, we talk about money all the time. We definitely need to know what we're looking at here, money-wise.
Sure. Yeah, we'll get that information out to you guys as soon as I leave here.
And I'm sure Aaron feels the same way.
Yeah, yeah, that would be nice because, you know, 1,500 dollars per month, you know, that, that would end up being 18,000 per year. And if we are just trying a new program of, you know, I don't think it's going to take very many times with someone getting popped with one of those things to, for them to actually be effective. So I don't know necessarily if, is six the, the correct amount to start with? I mean, would you all, you know, be perhaps want to try something like four or three units to start with, Brad? Or?
I mean, we could definitely, we could definitely do that. I, I will say that there's been times that I've responded to, to Alligator Point in reference to illegal parked vehicles and arrive on scene to our, our third parking area, which is close to the, the S-curves down there and, and have as many as, as four, five. And I did have a complaint one day of eight vehicles being parked illegally. And when we talk about illegally, not just sort of sideways in a parking slot, but literally half on and half off the road causing a, a, a traffic hazard. And so no doubt, we could start with a smaller or fewer amount to, to save money. But should we show up on scene and, and if we've got six and there's eight vehicles, we're in the same position. You know, one would get the Barnacle placed on and one may not if we don't have enough devices. But, but no doubt, we could start with fewer and, and see how it goes and, and request more if need be.
Yeah, I would, I would also just add really quick, like there is no requirements, like you don't need to get a certain number of devices to start. So whether it's six, whether it's three, it's, it's a model where a lot of our other customers, police department cities, they start with a certain number. Then as they get comfortable and kind of understand like different use cases or what's working, what's not working, you know, where some frequent violations are occurring, then it's as simple, it's just coming back to us and saying, hey, turns out we need two more devices or, you know, we're good with the four we have. Because what, we ship them UPS and they generally get to you within one to two business days at most. So it's a pretty quick process as far as ever a situation of you needing more devices and just letting us know.
Okay.
Quick question. Well, number one observation. So you said earlier in the presentation, the deposit that will be required for each Barnacle, these are, you also said that these are GPS devices? So as they drop them in the Dropbox, you'll be able to tell them in the Dropbox and then that 300 dollars will just fall off their, charge on their, on their card, correct?
Yeah, so the device itself will just need to be checked back in through the technology. But once it's checked back in, then that deposit is what essentially is falling off the, it's just like any sort of credit card hold, if you will. But once a device is checked back in, that triggers the refund for the customer.
Okay. A follow-up to that, if, so say we did start with four, we get a Dropbox is the way I understand it for every three. If, if a month later we order two more, does that include another Dropbox? Or does it have to be three more at one time to get another Dropbox?
Yeah, it would be every three devices.
Okay. That's fair enough.
So Michael, with that, with that three devices comes a Dropbox. If we have four devices and we deployed four units on devices, and we deployed four units on alligator point, or St. George, wherever it may be, and all four devices were cleared from the vehicle, would they all four be able to fit in the drop box, or is it simply contain only three devices?
No, they all four would be able to fit, no problem.
Well, I'll say this, before, and the board hasn't made a motion or anything yet, I'm fine with it being six. And here's the reason why. If it starts slowing down illegal parking, we definitely have more than just alligator point that has illegal parking on them. So if we limit ourselves to three, I think we're kind of strangling ourselves getting out of the gate. But that's, and that would be the only reason why.
You know, I'm all in favor of this, but I'm like, the money, but I think if we're going to do it, might as well do it the way it needs to be done, then we don't have to double-check ourselves. And so six would be what I would want, too, to go down there and be done with it. And, but the money, you know, I'm all, I want to see how it does, because it may be, it doesn't work, but if it does, then maybe we'll have a solution, or partial solution of the problem. Let's see.
I don't see it not working. If I had to pay 408 dollars, it'd be working really quick.
My only question is, is battery life. And what happens once that battery dies? Just to say that someone comes up, they don't have a credit card, or whatever, and don't show up for a couple days, you know, to come back to get the vehicle. The battery dies, does the suction let off? And then, you know, where are we at there? I mean, I'm just throwing what-if scenarios out there.
Sure. I think Mr. Handley, he spoke a minute ago about if we've got a fully charged unit, and we place it on a vehicle, it could last up to seven days. Is that correct, Mr. Handley?
That's correct. And then, I mean, even if one that's 50% charged, typically, we've seen it lasting four to five days on a vehicle. But we've never heard of a device sitting on a vehicle for more than, I think, 48, 48 hours or so, two to three days. So.
And also, I'm sorry, Michael, but also to address that, that issue, Commissioner, if, if we've got a vehicle that's there more than a day, we're going to have the vehicle towed. We'll have it removed. It's not simply going to sit there and cause that traffic issue. We'll, we'll have it removed at that point.
Understood. I'm just thinking down the road, because as you progress in the, this part of the county, you start getting local people, and you know how our folks are, they live there a month. But, but I'm just talking about Franklin County people. But my only other thing is, I would echo the sentiment about getting more devices, because what's going to lead to is, is it's going to put you in a situation where, if you've got three devices down there, and you've got six people, you're going to have to be selective on who you put it on. Or, and, or it may start trending that people go, hey, let's just show up a little late, and we'll park illegally, and let everybody else carry the fine, you know?
Right.
But, and I can see that, if I was walking back off the beach or something, I've got the Barnacle on there, and then there's two other cars parked right there beside me in the same fashion, I'm going to argue the fact that, hey, why didn't they get a Barnacle as well, you know?
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I agree with that. And also, with the increase in the fines, because that was the first thing I was thinking of, you know, in a former life, and don't look at me, I would have just paid the $25. But, and that's the mentality that you'd run into.
Attorney, should you raise your hand? Sorry.
Yes, sir. I have a question for Mr. Handley, and also for Captain Segree. Hi, this is Michael Shuler. I represent the County Commission. I would like to get a copy of your draft contract sent to me through Captain Segree. He has my contact information, so that I can review the contract and be ready to go, when the board's ready to make a decision, and not, you know, wait until then to get the contract, and then look at it.
Yes.
Then, the other question is, do we know where else in Florida this Barnacle has been used?
I see that, just looking at the information, Mr. Handley, I believe, was it Palm Beach Police Department, Palm Beach County? Can you, can you speak to other agencies here in Florida that may be using the device?
Yep, I'll share this slide again. But yeah, there's, so City of West Palm Beach, City of Pompano Beach, City of Hallandale Beach. There's a litany of some more private operators, residential property management companies in the state of Florida as well. But, and then seaside communities in Florida uses them as well. So there's, there's several different municipalities and other types of properties that use Barnacle today.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Did you say seaside, Michael?
Yes, sir.
All right. Seaside has a big parking, yeah, Walton has a big parking issue, too, or had.
We used to, we used to also work with Blue Mountain Beach. However, they, they ended up running into a, they were dealing with more golf carts than vehicles. So it obviously didn't make much sense for them, because the vehicles started, well, it actually started working for them, right? So, and people were starting to drive their, that's a very big golf cart community, obviously. But that was another one we worked with several years ago as well.
Clerk Maxwell, did you have any reason?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, on top of the $108 fee, fine, I wanted to add the $5 fee for our office. It's the same as the other MOs that we already are doing, it's just be an additional $5.
So when we look at changing that, we need to look at making it 108 plus five?
Please.
Good thing.
I've got one more question. Clerk, if you can answer this, it's okay, and I'm putting you on the spot. How much money of that, because I know that anytime we have a ticket, or give a parking ticket, or any ticket in this county, how much of that do we actually get back from the state? Because we have to send that, some money goes to the state, right?
Yeah, I would have to have my distribution schedule, because there's different buckets in each state department, and fines and fees go to, and without my list, I wouldn't be able to break it down.
But I could get it to you. Yeah, because I just, again, like I said, everybody talks about money. I'm thinking there's a way, you know, that could probably potentially pay for itself, if he's throwing six Barnacles out there every day. I mean, I feel like that it would pay for itself in the long run. But that's kind of where I am with the, with the whole money thing, because that's what we have to think about. But I'm all for this. Do we need to, how do we, do we need to make a motion to change the, do we have to have a public hearing on that?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm going to make a motion to have a public hearing to change the parking ordinance fee schedule?
Yes, ma'am.
To 108 plus five for the clerk's office.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Crowe, for this public hearing to adjust or change our parking fee schedule. Any discussion before we vote on the side? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Before we make a motion, and the second thing, Ms. Erin's still on the line, I don't want to put her on the spot, but I do want to ask a question, because it seems to me, and I might be wrong, that the board's talking about trying to have the contract in front of Attorney Shuler, so he can have it ready to go for the next meeting. We can have something in front of us that shows us the actual breakdown of the dollar spent, maybe possibly the next meeting, because I think, I think we're all in favor of it. But before we do that, I want to ask Ms. Erin, Ms. Erin, of the 10%, this is set aside now for emergency and first responders, we need to check and see if there would be enough money for TDC to fund this, for the, to get this project off and around, between now and next meeting.
Well, we could definitely do that. Now, one thing to note, Commissioner, you know, I mean, basically what we're looking at, you know, even if we were able to have this equipment in place by June 1st, at $1,500 a month, you're talking about a hit to the Sheriff's Department budget of $6,000. We are also coming up on a new budget cycle as well. So, you know, if, if the board did decide to go with this option, you know, there's plenty of time for him to actually add that into his budget request, to be able to fully fund a full year.
Okay. Okay, so the question I'm asking, though, in that gap in between, first, I don't know the amount, is there money left in that TDC line item budget for these kind of things, for tourism-related issues? And could we possibly use that?
There would be the funds available within the 10%. You know, for that $6,000 stopgap, I mean, however, you know, it is $6,000, and he does have over a $7 million budget. So I don't know if, you know, if that's something that they absolutely cannot fund, or not interested in funding from their regular operating budget.
Yes, ma'am. And I don't know that either. I was just wanting to find out if there was any money left in the TDC revenues, and we'd be ready to discuss it. That's all I was doing.
So are we getting a motion to table until the next meeting with all the information?
That's what I've heard.
Okay.
Is it, Commissioner, is that what you're going to do?
I'm not comfortable with making a motion right now. I'm for this, but until we know some more from the monetary standpoint, because, you know, we have to be mindful of that as well. You know, how we go, everything's a great idea, it's how we're going to pay for it, is the next question. So I'm all for it, but I think we need to table it, because until we know some cost, and where it's, what budget it's coming out of, whether it's TDC in the interim versus the sheriff adding it to his budget, this upcoming budget cycle, I think it, that would be in our best interest to hold off right now until we can get some more information. Plus, Attorney Shuler needs to probably look at the draft contract as well, to ensure that we're, you know, okay with that.
On updating the ordinance, the current instructions to me from the board are to schedule public hearings at the second meeting of each month, with, given the, we're coming into the season, and parking's becoming more of an issue, I can't have this scheduled for a public hearing at the first meeting in June, if that's okay with the board.
I, Commissioner, I would recommend that also.
Okay. I don't see any opposition, so that's what I'll do.
Okay.
We'll make room on here.
So I'll make a motion to table this until the next meeting, so we can get some more information. And that way, it'll give Erin time to think about the budgeting aspect of it, too, and.
That's right. All right, so we do have a motion to table for today, and to take this back up on our next agenda, on our regular scheduled meeting, two weeks from now. Uh, Commissioner Ward. We have a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Yes, ma'am.
For the ordinance, that's what I'm trying to do.
I thought there was a second.
I said, he's seconded it a while ago, but we never voted on it.
Yep, so. All right. Thank you, Mr. Segree.
Thank you. They don't talk into the microphones, just jackass them.
Who's talking?
Somebody's unmuted there, and.
She just called us a bunch of jackasses.
I think she sure did.
She sure did. Mel Kelly just called us a bunch of jackasses.
Oh, that's right, because she is. Commissioner Ward, you're right. And she is still unmuted from her public comments, so. Because that lets, you know how she feels.
Okay, up next, Mr. Howard Neighbors.
As Howard is approaching, I'd like to tell Stroud, let me see, who's coming up here?
Went from thanking us to.
I'll let Stroud water. I know Mr. Bill Williams is here, and Mr. James Riley from Baker Telly, let them all know that we're running slightly behind. So they're appearing on Zoom, except for Mr. Williams, okay?
All right. Howard, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
I'm good. How you doing?
Doing good. I got no action items, but we've been wide open, so.
It's good to see you, Howard.
Good to see y'all, Commissioner.
We appreciate everything y'all do.
Yeah, we thank y'all.
Mr. Howard, I want to ask a question while you're here. We talked a couple of weeks ago about, it's not Carroll Street, it's the road beside, is it Smith Street? About having to cut the road and put a covert in?
Yes, sir.
Where they're going to get drainage off all those properties?
Yes, sir.
Where are we at in that? We've not done that yet.
We hadn't done it yet. We got another one. We also got to do on Kevin Road, but maybe one day next week, we try to, try to get started.
All right, if you'll get up with me, we'll discuss that later date. And there's some other areas that I want to hit that ain't as major as that, but some things that we can get done that'll help. I appreciate your time. And thank you for your help with the ditch issue, Ed, where somebody tried to take the ride away.
Yes, sir.
And for the issue over on the island, we're trying to help this resident figure out how they're going to build their home. So thank you. Anyone have anything for Mr. Neighbors?
Mr. Chairman, I've got, I've got several things, but it's kind of really directed to all the department directors. So I'll just wait till the last one stands up there, as long as everybody stays to hear what I have to say. But for you, Mr. Howard, in terms of some culverts, and I don't want to throw Erin on the spot again, but I know that the governor has not signed his budget yet, but I know his biggest thing is stormwater improvements and drainage, bless you. I'm going to see if there's some kind of funding available, grant-wise, to help, because I know my district is one of the worst ones, ridge and wilderness specifically, about drainage. Some people have covert pipes, some they don't. Some people can't afford the drainage pipe. So I'm wondering if maybe there's some money that we can find available in a grant, that we can maybe provide some culverts to these people that can't afford one, and place them, so that it would help with the drainage issues in those areas, to help you guys with your job make it easier to.
That's correct. And the last five or six years on culvert, it's went sky-high. So you're talking about like 18, about 30, like $800 now. So everything's basically doubled. Which it ain't just culverts, it's everything.
Yeah, it is.
And the culverts collapse, and they can't replace them, because.
It was that, and years ago, people just put in whatever, you know what I'm saying, little pipes. And you got 18 or 15-inch pipe feeding to a 16-inch pipe, I mean, it's going to hold up water, so.
And maybe, you know, other areas of the county, too, can fall in, same, same thing. So it's just a thought. I'm, I'm going to get with Erin on that later on.
Well, and, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Oh, nevermind.
We're having a lot of people coming in and putting just a road in without putting a covert in. And when it rains, it's causing bad flooding problems. So we need to be looking at that. And I agree with you. Maybe, maybe there is some grants out there for some help with the cover, with drainage and stuff, and.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Neighbors? Howard, thank you for everything y'all do.
Thank y'all, Commissioner. Have a good one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Fonda Davis?
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Commissioner. Y'all all right?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I do have an action item on my report this morning, and it's groundkeeper's position for board's action on April 30, 2024, Dour Chamber, known as Buddy, retired from Parks and Recreation Groundkeeper position, leaving an opening in Parks and Recreation. Action requested, authorizing a posting of other vacancy.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
I hate to hear that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I like old Buddy now. He's a good guy.
Yeah, I hate to hear that. He served the county for a long, long time, so I wish him best of blessing in his retirement.
I'm glad to see that.
Next item I have is just for your information, employee new hire announcement, Corey Segree and Michael Daniels has been hired. Corey is in Parks and Recreation, and he filled the position, started Wednesday, April 24th, and Michael will start Wednesday, the 15th, May 15th. He will be in solid ways.
Fonda, thank you for all you do.
Yes, ma'am.
Because you, you're a man that wears many hats.
Yes, ma'am. With the help of a great team, I just can't take it all upon myself, Commissioner. Yeah, thank you.
That's it. Thank you for what you do.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
Mr. Chairman speaking of the many hats that the board doesn't mind, page 24, this is just an information item. The Seahawk Diamond Booster Club requested the use of the Armory for the Franklin County Baseball Banquet on Thursday, May 16, 2024, at 6:00 PM. On the Fonda's hats is overseeing the Armory. As the county has done in the past, there'll be no rental charge for this type of event, even though the superintendent is here sitting down. I could put my hand in his, my hand in his pocket, but we won't do that today, Commissioner. We'd be nicer to the superintendent. And there'll be no charge for that event, as it's a sporting, a school sporting event. So we encourage that all the time.
Michael, we also need to update with number 15.
Yes.
It depends on when that happens. That could affect the school.
And at some point, Commissioner, I know, Mr. Kurington, county planner, but he also does a lot of your grant work. So he's thinking at some time in 2025, those remaining improvements to the Armory will cause the Armory to be closed at some point for a couple of months, like it's done in the past. So Commissioners, Mark, he had a meeting with the architects on Friday. He should have a loose timetable, that we could meet with Fonda and his staff to kind of advertise or block out dates on the Armory's calendar, when it's going to be closed in 2025. But he wanted the board and Fonda to be public, to be aware of this upcoming, as people plan events way ahead of time.
Yes, so if we can do it in months that don't involve April and May, that would be really good. That's what the problem is, sir.
I'll let him know.
And banquets. And weddings.
Anything else?
That'll do it.
That's, that's it, Al, for my report. That affects Mr. Davis.
Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, I got something. Michael, Mr. Davis talked about a position coming available. Is there any way that we could put on our website, somewhere, maybe on the quick links, where that shows employment opportunities, so it's not so complex to find on here? Is there any way that we can put on our website somewhere, maybe on the quick links, where that shows employment opportunities, so it's not so complex to find on there? Also, it's like it'd take forever for me to...
Too far buried in the website? Okay.
So if we can do that, because we want, for applicants, we want to make it easy for them, not having to search through different tabs. So let's, let's get a tab on there that says employment opportunities. If we can do that.
Mr. Commissioner, I mean Commissioner Kroom?
Yeah.
So it is written, so it is done. Courtney, as you're listening, would you email Sterling and have him to add a quick link for employment opportunities on the website, please? You could just indicate by thumbs up. And it'll be done, sir?
Thank you. Mr. Davis, uh, I know Mr. Kershaw-Bone mentioned this in his report, but, uh, just something to be thinking about. About can you utilize a two thousand seven, uh, JLG highlighter? If you, if you need one, Mr. Kershaw-Bone got one for you.
Okay.
He, he specifically mentioned Parks and Recs, so.
Okay, yes, sir.
That's all I had.
Anyone else?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I got something, but I'm gonna wait for all the directors to get done, because what I have to say affects all of them.
She's making y'all stand. See what's going on, right?
So you want me to hang around?
Mr. Davis.
You know.
Mr. Davis, thank you.
Okay.
He's worried now.
He got worried.
He shouldn't be worried.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you all.
Ms. Jennifer Daniels?
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I have one action item this morning. Unfortunately, Josh, our special needs coordinator, has the, he's anticipating leaving. He has an interview on this Friday, and I'm requesting the board's approval to go ahead and advertise for my special needs coordinator position because I'm rolling into season without my third person.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know how much you guys interacted with Josh, he was really good. He was smart and quick and...
That's kind of why I didn't want to make the motion, but I mean, I can't help it, he's going to the better, I mean, I don't want to say bigger, better things, but he's got a...
We are too.
I'm really sorry to hear that.
I hate that he's leaving.
Yeah, me, you and me.
He's good, he was good, like everybody is, I mean, you know, you know, they always have the saying, um, you always hire people to make you look good. So he made you look good.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, he did.
Anyone have any other questions or concerns for Ms. Daniels?
I have one thing, if I can. It's not an action item, I just would like to make everyone aware that we, that with the work of, with the help of Weatherstem, with the help of our road department, Duke Energy, uh, FWC, um, I'm just trying to make sure I don't miss anyone, but we, uh, Mr. Randy Cannon over on Alligator, um, Dog Island and over at the Alligator Point Fire Department, we now have three new Weatherstems located in Franklin County. Uh, one on Alligator Point Volunteer Fire Department, one actually on Dog Island, right at the airport, and another on St. George Island, um, right by the Lighthouse Park. Please, everyone...
Which one do you want me to open up?
Actually, they all have a beautiful view, but, uh, pull, pull, I'm partial to the Dog Island one, I can't help it. Pull it, it's, it's absolutely amazing. There's the view from the, the live feed camera on Dog Island. Um, download the app, if you can get the app, you can pull up. We now have nine Weatherstem stations in Franklin County, seven of which are, are funded or handled through the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners and the EOC.
And you know, one thing that I was talking to you about, Jennifer, was during a hurricane, Dog Island is the front of, you know, basically with St. George Island and also an Alligator Point. But we never have been able to see what the storms look like coming in from Dog Island. A long time ago, Mr. Granger would, you know, let us see something every now and then, but it's gonna be interesting.
Yes, ma'am.
It's gonna be interesting, for sure.
Well, I have to, I, I do have to brag once again, though, on our road department, these guys actually went over with post hole diggers with oyster tongues on them and dug me a, uh, uh, eight foot hole to put a pole in at one point. So, I mean, it, this has just been a group effort, it's been amazing, and those guys have been just wonderful, so.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Commissioner Sanders, I hope it's a long time before we see the effects of a storm coming into Dog Island.
I hope so, too.
Just, just me personally. The less we have, the more I like it. Uh, Mr. Polis?
Good morning, Commissioners. Just have some information item for you this morning. Appalachia Cola, we've had four requests, call-in requests for services in St. George Island, nine, Carebell, four, he's point six. Uh, spray season's in full effect. We sprayed approximately eighteen thousand five hundred and forty acres, and we're still larviciding at this time. We use a thousand and eighty, uh, brickets in various places. And, uh, some of those places have dried up at this time, but the brickets are still there. When it rains again, they will reactivate. That's one of the reasons we use what we use, uh, because of matten hours. Uh, you can also see that the, uh, the counts for this past month have, have picked up, so. We're in full, full effect, we're, we're after them, and of course the yellow flies are starting to show up too, so.
Ask me about...
I'm still swelled up.
They're demons. Uh, Mr. Chairman, my, my question. Dee Wilt? Let me ask you something. In Carebell, do you have land art, Alligator Point included in Carebell's numbers?
No, no, there, we don't act, at this time, we don't have a trap down at Alligator Point. Mr. Uh, Husky, I think, was, was running a trap for us for several years, then he got where he wasn't able to keep up with it. And for the camps that we were getting it, just weren't worth the, the drive, forty-five minutes there, forty-five minutes back to maintain that one. But if we can find a volunteer in that area, it would be, be great to have somebody that could relay that information to us.
Well, and I think me and you need to get together and devise a formula that we can use on them yellow flies. We got to do something. They came in fourth today. I mean, that's what, they came in on the fourth last year, they came in on the second this year. But they're coming in with a mighty vengeance. I mean, they're, they're, I mean, they're boom lighting and biting at the same time.
Yeah, we, we experienced that some up Hickory Land and went up there this weekend, and the time they light on you, they bite you.
Hey, that, you know what? That's one of the joys of living in Franklin County, ain't it? I'll, I'll take the yellow fly bites any time to be able to live.
Get that formula, we can get rid of it.
Right.
Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Polis? Mr. Polis, thank you for everything y'all do, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Lovestrand?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I don't have any action items in my report for you, but I did want to give you an update on one of our programs that took place this past Saturday. We hosted our district-wide four-age public speaking competition at the McCall County Extension Office, and we had two students from Franklin County that came all the way over and participated because they won the county-level competition. In the sixth grade division, Ms. Miley Beasley represented that group, age group level, with her speech on why do grades matter, and Miley received an honorable mention for her presentation. And in the fourth, fifth grade grouping, which, um, they, they kind of worked together in the same grouping, Ms. Kami Polaramus, who's a fourth grader at the ABC School, represented with her speech on making the world a better place. And if you haven't seen it on Facebook yet, because it's been out there, Kami won, uh, the first place award, actually, in the district-wide public speaking competition. That's the first time we have had that honor for Franklin County youth over there, and we are really proud of both of these young ladies who came and represented very well. And, um, we really appreciate the support of the teachers and the parents and family that support these young people as they go through this competition each year.
Thank you, Mr. Eric, for sharing that. That is really good news, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns for Mr. Lovestrand? Mr. Eric, thank y'all for everything you do on behalf of Franklin County and really all the counties in Florida, because there's an IFIS in every county.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Whitney Roundtree, Library Director?
Let me see, she's not, oh. She came in through the, um, portal, okay. Alright, she is unmuted, Commissioner, I'm sorry. She came in through a tent, instead of a panelist for some reason today.
Hey, Ms. Whitney.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I have one action item today. The Friends of the Library would like to request permission to make some landscape improvements at the Carebell Library. They would like to fill the low area to the north front right side with dirt, so if you're looking at the building, it's right there to the right of the entrance. Um, it slopes right there, um, so they would like to fill it in with dirt, use topsoil for the top layer, and complete with grade runoff and install sod pallets. It will level the yard to the end of the palm trees and angle out towards the end of the sidewalk with grade. Um, this will provide more usable space on the grounds for outdoor events, um, such as our annual book sale. The cost for this project is three thousand dollars, and it will come out of the Friends' existing funds already earmarked for beautification.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Good. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by two, Commissioner Kroom and Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
I do have a question. Um, we were talking about trimming the palm trees, did we ever get that done? Because I know that, that one of the issues was when we had the incident, that the camera was blocked by a palm tree.
Yeah, I believe, um, Shane talked to me the other day, he has somebody scheduled to come down, double check and see when, when, what date they're exactly supposed to be there.
Alright, well, let's try to coordinate it with this too, because I don't want them all being in the way of each other.
Okay. I'll have him contact Whitney.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we want to get it done before it gets any hotter.
You better do it today, then.
Yeah, as we cook it. Um, and thank you so much for that.
Not a problem. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, Erin has her hand raised. I don't know if it's a Whitney question or statement. Go ahead, Erin. Well, I thought she did, my bad.
Alright. Anyone have any questions or concerns for Ms. Roundtree? Ms. Whitney, thank you for everything you do on behalf of Franklin County and its residents. Keep it up.
Alright, thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to know that everybody's done with their director reports. I want to take a minute to, to discuss a couple of things, um, and, and most of the department directors in this room I've already met with, except for Ms. Daniels, um, which I plan on meeting with you. I had concerns, and there was some, uh, questions about a recent move that we made to give an individual a raise. I just want to say that I'm, I back our county employees a hundred and ten percent, always have, always will. There's no question to that. You guys go above and beyond the call of duty, you help each other out, you got departments helping each other out, and I appreciate that. Um, I talked to Erin about this the other day as well, uh, Michael Moron was also there. I think moving forward, um, we need to look at, and I, and I think Erin's bringing this up in her report, and I mentioned it in the last budget, all of our constitutional officers get a budget of a certain amount of money, and they're responsible for that, that money and, and basically spend it how they seem fit to run their department effectively. This is a two-sided thing. One thing is, I think it is a hard ask, it is an impossible ask for us to, every year, ask them to come back with the same amount of budget that they had the year prior. That is, we can't do that anymore. It's with inflation going up, the cost of fuel's gone up, I'm sure herbicide that, uh, Mr. Polis uses has increased. Herbicide, whatever, the, uh, mosquito spray. Parts for equipment's gone up, we can't continue to ask these department directors to come back with us to this board every year with the same amount. Our county citizens, our citizens that live here, expect a service. And how can we expect that service when we tell them, we'll try to run your department based on two years ago's numbers? That's impossible. It's, you can't do that. So I've, I've told the directors that I've spoke to, and the ones I haven't spoke to, I'm telling you right now, I'm one of five. But I want you to put in your budget what you need to effectively and efficiently run your department the way it's supposed to. That's county rate, employee raises, that's equipment, that's, uh, supplies, increase in fuel costs, everything. And I know we have the, the capital improvement plan as well. But in addition to that, uh, you know, we've got one more year of the Evergreen Pay Plan. And it's like I told somebody the other day, I, I think that there's been some, I don't, I, I appreciate what Evergreen's done. I think they've done a great job in, in some instances, but I do think in some instances, there were some, uh, I don't want to say inconsistencies or some, some confusion, and I've told, and I want to sit down with some of the department directors, you and, uh, or Erin, to discuss this, so that, because we have to decide in a year if we're gonna continue with Evergreen, if we're gonna go out for RFQs for another company, or if we're gonna go back to the cost of living raises. Because I don't want to sit up here at this board and, and decide to give a raise to a county employee and then get questioned about it. You know, I don't, I don't want that to be either. Um, so, you know, there's just a lot of things at play here, and I think with, with the budget coming up, I want all the department directors to put on their budget what they seem fit. Don't ask for the same from last year, put whatever you think's gonna run your department. We can always work hard and work to, to, to the lower amount. We can't go up, we can't start a number and then go up. It has to start from high and start, go low. So that's, that's my request to them, um, and then I'm gonna get with you, Ms. Daniels, and then I've already met with Mr. Howard and Mr. Fonda, but I think we might need to sit down and go over some of the stuff with, with, with moving forward so that we all could be on the same page, because when we do this next year, whatever we decide to do budgetary-wise for our county employee raises, I don't want this giving somebody a raise and then somebody calling and being upset about it, or someone questioning it, or anything like that. Because, again, I, I back our employees a hundred and twenty percent, a hundred and ten percent, I've got you back. But I want to make it fair, I want to make it the way everybody's on the same page, and I do know that there were some inconsistencies, I would say. So that's, that's kind of where I am with that. I don't know if any other Commissioners got complaints on or concerns with that, but I do.
I did for a little while, until I reminded the employees that were complaining, and it was consistently the same people that since I've been on the board, they've got a raise every year. In the last four years, they've gotten more than any four years that they've ever gotten all the time they've worked for the county. As far as somebody recently getting a, uh, a pay increase, they got promoted to a different level. They got responsibilities. I know with my everyday job, not what I'm doing here, I get paid more because I'm responsible for more. So, yeah, the guy down the counter from me can probably do things just as good as I'm doing them, but there's things that I know and I'm responsible for that he's not. And if the owner, or in this case, if the county comes to question, we're gonna question our department directors. We're not gonna question the guy on the tractor, or the guy on the dump truck, or the guy that's picking up at the parks. That's just not the way that works. So, I mean, I get what you're saying, I understand what you're saying. I do agree that things are exponentially going up, and we need to be realistic about that. But I don't know that I would support giving a lump sum to any of our departments for raises because we don't have a true HR department. We don't, at this time, do any annual evaluations. There, there's nothing there to say that employees are either good or bad, because we just do not have those procedures in place. So if we did that, even if it was fifteen thousand dollars, if one person got five, another one got four, and the one that got four complained, that's, that's a valid lawsuit. We don't have any paperwork showing where they failed to do their duty, haven't done their duty correctly, have served their duty, or, you know, we don't have any of that. So before we start worrying about that, we got, we gotta talk about whether we have HR.
Well, again...
Because we don't have those annual recordings, those annual employee evaluations. If we do have them, I've missed it, somebody please straighten me out.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, which again is, I think, why we need to probably sit down and, and think about it and talk about it, so that moving forward, we're not in this position.
Yep.
So, that's, that's just my thoughts.
Oh, yeah.
And I felt like we needed, we need to do it now, because we're coming into budget season, and I want to make sure. Now, that also being said, if people in our community expect a certain service, then they can expect, and I'm not a big advocate for increasing taxes, but guess what? We are the lowest county in the state of Florida with the lowest millage rate in the whole state, correct? I think we are the lowest.
One of them.
Yeah, and we've had the same millage for a good little while. So I, I can foresee, I don't want to, but we won't know, hypothetically thinking, we might see an increase, and might have to see that increase this year. But again, I, if our citizens want those services, then they're gonna have to expect to pay for those services as well. So those are just, just some thoughts I'm throwing out there.
All right. Is that it?
Yeah, people need to start muting their mics.
I think that was Erin and Courtney waiting to jump in on the next.
Probably was. Anything else before we proceed? All right, let's go now to our Planning Zone Adjustment Board report. Let's do this real quick. So we're doing the first up, is the special exception, Ms. Courtney?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead.
So this is the consideration to construct a 185-foot communication tower and fenced support, supporting facility. The applicant has requested a special exception as required in R1, single-family residential zoning. This is in Apalachicola, Franklin County. It is submitted by Matinee John, Agent for Desert Ranges of North Florida LLC.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions about this?
Mr. Chairman, Courtney wasn't at the AOED meeting, but the chairman has contacted me and wanted, and you can see it in his report where it's later on, that they fully support this project because that's what we tabled it for, to give them a chance to review it. The representatives were at the AOED meeting and that very good presentation. I think there was a discussion about tower light at some, oh, there, Steve, about a light in the tower, but otherwise to that, it was, they fully supported it.
Okay. So do we?
That was the reason why you tabled it. So I just kind of want to refresh.
I just want to make sure that we haven't tabled anything in quite a while. Are we needing to have the whole discussion again? Or we just, what do we need to do procedurally?
You do not need to reconduct the hearing.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
If a board member has questions, then obviously the board member can ask for the additional questions. I don't think it's necessary to have a second presentation on this matter. If the board has no questions, you're in a procedural position to approve, deny, or table again if that's your choice.
Okay, well, I'm good with the recommendation that was made by the Airport Advisory Board, but I'm just one of five. How do you all want to proceed, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I pulled my motion back on it last time because Commissioner Amison had a concern. Commissioner Amison, are your concerns met?
Yeah, oh, definitely. I just, you know, at the time, when we were doing that, it hadn't been reviewed by the board, at the airport board, and we had, you know, we'd been trying to give our voluntary boards, you know.
Their due.
Their due. So that was really all of it. And there was, there was a concern from a couple individuals, but we alleviated all that. I just wanted to make sure that we slowed down, did it right. That way we didn't run into any, you Commissioners are doing whatever you want kind of situation. So, with that being said, we need a motion.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Krumm. Any discussion?
Give me some sales service out there.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Up next is a variance request. Ms. Courtney?
This is also for the same applicant. This is just a variance request because they have to exceed the 47-foot max building height. So they'll be constructing a 185-foot tall communication tower. So they need a variance to construct 138 feet above the 47-foot max.
Seeing that we have approved this special exception, I would entertain a motion to approve this variance.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you. All right, now, in the interest of time, we are going to take a short break, recess for five minutes.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. Up next, we're going to hear from Mr. Jeff Sommer from Stroudwater. Please proceed, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. I'm here with two of my colleagues who I will ask to introduce themselves. First, I'll start introducing myself. Again, my name is Jeff Sommer. I'm the Managing Director of Stroudwater. Stroudwater is an employee-owned strategic advisory firm that focuses exclusively, or nearly exclusively, in rural health care in the United States. We work nationally. In any given year, we probably work in 40 to 42 states. My role, I focus at Stroudwater on questions of strategy and also partnerships. Again, really focused on rural health systems, rural hospitals, and rural communities in that role. With that, let me introduce my two colleagues. John, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Very quickly, my name is John Downs. I'm a Principal at Stroudwater. I've been here for 15 years. Prior to that was with an architectural firm for 14 years designing health care projects. I'm not an architect by training, but really focused on the underlying market analytics and the facility master planning components. Most of my work historically has been with community and academic medical centers. And then when I joined Stroudwater 15 years ago, I took on the strategic planning and facility master planning components there and have done about 40 master facility plans for rural and critical access hospitals.
Terrific. Thank you, John. Wade, would you like to introduce yourself?
Of course. My name is Wade Gallin. I'm a Senior Consultant here at Stroudwater. It's good to meet you all. I specialize primarily in financing reimbursement for the firm. So I'm the financial numbers guy here at the firm, or one of the many. And I focus primarily on financial and operational improvement for rural providers, critical access hospitals, small community hospitals. Have a background working with Medicare cost reports very heavily, so that informs a lot of my consulting work here. Looking forward to being on the call.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Wade. So a little background on Stroudwater. The firm was founded in 1985. I mentioned we have a national practice. The large dots are our partnerships and affiliations clients. The smaller dots, which you can see there, is a sampling of the rural clients we've had around the country. And in any given year, we probably work with a couple hundred different critical access hospitals, which is the type of hospital that you have in Franklin County and one that we're expert at guiding, both from an operational perspective and a payment perspective. They get paid using cost-based payment, which is a unique attribute of them, but also understanding the complexities and constraints of rural health care delivery. When you're operating a rural health system in a county with a population of 12,000 folks, that has a unique set of implications to it that is very different from an urban setting or even a larger suburban setting. And it's a set of circumstances that we're very familiar with. Based on a conversation that we had previously, we understand the key issues for Franklin County and Williams Memorial to be an aging facility that's in need of replacement, question of whether that facility would be best served and the community be best served with a rural emergency hospital or critical access hospital. And what I would say is, given both John and Wade's backgrounds, our team brings significant expertise in addressing those issues specifically. One of the things we pride ourselves in is tying facility investment to market need. And John will spend a little bit more time talking about this when we get to his section, but I think one of the things that our team has found all too often is you go to visit a rural hospital and ask them what their plans are, if they've got a facility replacement or a significant capital need. And the board can point to, you know, three or four different facility plans that never came to fruition because they weren't financially feasible and they weren't grounded in the market reality. That is what the actual needs were and sized to the needs of the community. And because we work, you know, 80% of our time in rural, we're very adept at understanding what rural communities can afford to build and what's necessary there. We have a subsidiary that is expert in the USDA Community Facilities Program, which is a frequently used capital source for rural health systems. They're also expert in other sources of capital. So what I, the point being that Stroudwater starts to tie together various disciplines that are essential to addressing the strategic, operational, and facility issues that Franklin County and Williams Memorial face. We are expert at doing financial feasibility studies for projects and do these routinely. And as I mentioned in my introduction, we do a lot of work in the partnering space. And then we get into some of the operational issues that we're aware of that have been significant challenges for Williams Memorial, provider recruitment and retention. We have a team that is focused in that space. And developing sustainable operating models for service delivery for rural health systems. So these are the issues we're aware of. There may be others, and we're certainly happy to take questions or respond to questions, but we do address those. Just a question for the Commissioners and Michael, would you prefer to hold questions to the end or have us do the presentation? What would be your preference?
Commissioners, would you all wait and ask your questions at the end?
I'm fine with that.
We'll just wait to the end, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Wade to talk about some of the key issues in his area of expertise.
Absolutely. So as we're thinking about rural health care operations and strategy, there's a number of different areas that we touch on. Generally, when I'm working with critical access hospitals and small rural hospitals, we do assessments of overall financial and operational performance. We also have a number of other offerings that we do for critical access hospitals. So when we're thinking about strategy for the hospital and we're talking about an REH versus a critical access hospital, we really bring a comprehensive look, a holistic approach to evaluating that. There are a number of nuances to how we would calculate, say, the financial impact of a conversion or any designation type for a hospital. And it's not necessarily always direct. So for instance, with a rural emergency hospital, you have tangential issues such as 3, 4, and B, and how does it impact your ability to operate that program and make use of that program? You have impacts from a cost report perspective. As Jeff already touched on, we have really an understanding of what do we actually need in the community, and that's what my colleague JD will touch on a bit more. But really, just all this is emphasizing is that we take a very holistic approach to evaluating operational performance. We've done a number of evaluations in the past through partner programs, again, as Jeff mentioned, all over the country. And we're really focusing on how do we compare current operations to best practice. But again, very holistic approach. So when we're considering a question such as REH versus a critical access hospital, there are a number of different considerations that would be factored in.
Thank you, Wade. And one of the things I would note, just at a very, very high level, question, you know, what is the right designation? And it is holistic. It's not a simplistic answer to that. But I will say that if you're contemplating or likely to be doing a significant capital project to renew, replace an existing facility, the cost-based payment associated with critical access hospital designation is often a significant, not the only, but a significant consideration. And the simple reason that the interest and depreciation expense associated with a capital project runs through the cost report and then picks up incremental payment via that cost-based payment. So that's one consideration to keep in mind as you evaluate your options going forward. And certainly something that Wade and our team are expert at modeling and quantifying.
So we often start by asking, where are we today? And, you know, really, the first piece, and it's been said not only by Jeff and by Wade in our presentation, but even folks alluded to it in the previous conversations that you all were having as Commissioners, in terms of the cost of things. So we want to understand first, what's our capital capacity? What we could afford today might be different than what we were able to afford back in 2016 when we were looking at some facility investments. Unfortunately, costs have also gone up since 2016. And that capital capacity, as Jeff mentioned, is going to be driven by what our reimbursement model is, whether that's as a critical access hospital, a rural emergency hospital, a just a freestanding clinic. Obviously, we wouldn't be a PPS or prospective payment hospital. The next piece we want to understand is the service area, the area that you're providing care to, those 12,000 people in Franklin County, but also folks that are visiting or that have second homes in that area. If they're coming from the city, but they've got a place out on the coast that they want to be, that they want to be visiting in the times when they're not out at their primary residence, we've got to build those folks in. Understand what's happening demographically in terms of the aging of the population and how do those folks, as well as others, utilize health care services? Also, competition. Where are we competing today? Are we competing locally with any private physicians? Are we competing regionally with folks in Panama City or in Tallahassee? Or are we collaborating? Right? Different ways to look at that. And finally, the existing assets. We know that the 1959 building has outlived its useful clinical life. That's not to say that it's outlived its entire life. And we've also got our two clinic locations offsite in the communities. But in addition to the hard assets, the buildings themselves, I would actually look at the master plan that you did in 2016 as an asset. What can be taken from that planning work and utilized going forward? Or does it need to be rethought based on the answers to some of those other bullets that are up on the screen? Next slide, Jeff? So once we understand where we are, then we start to look at where we're going. And part of that is understanding what's happening in the market across the entire country. Even with the aging of the population, we've seen a decrease in the number of inpatient discharges. Well, that gets us lower and lower and lower from where we are today. And suddenly, we look at 12,000 people in a county utilizing inpatient care less frequently. We're a small critical access hospital that doesn't offer all services. Does it make sense for us to consider or to continue offering inpatient care? That's a dynamic that will be addressed in conversation. Again, it has implications relative to our capital capacity based on our designation. What is our vision for the future? Are we trying to provide care differently than we have historically and for different populations? And then finally, how do we do it? What are the strategic and tactical plans that you all need in order to execute successfully to be able to make your next facility investment? When we think about a facility project, and I'm sure this was very similar to the work that you all did back in 2016, we must involve multidisciplinary stakeholders. That includes many of the folks sitting at the dais there, the folks that are on the commission, as well as community members that are sitting in the audience. We've got to deal with providers. We've got to deal with patients and understand what the priorities for the facilities are. If we can't afford to do everything today, how do we make incremental investments that allow us to continue regenerating over time? Did our facility investment align with our strategy? Are we meeting the market needs? Jeff mentioned that at the very beginning, that, you know, the focus on understanding what the market is, is something that's important to us. And it's really because any investment wants to be balanced by the math, not just a hope and a prayer, but the math that there is a need in the community, that need will turn into revenue, that revenue will support the funding of our facility investment. We've got to look at options because today, we may have a certain priority, but we can't necessarily afford to do it all. How do we have options that let us be flexible? Fast-tracking immediate projects. If we can't afford to do everything, we also can't afford to stop and wait for the perfect storm to happen for us to be able to go forward. Again, at the beginning, we're looking at that capital availability, that financial feasibility, but then at the same time, we've got to have a high-level understanding of what it will cost us. It's a scary number, but when I start thinking about facility projects today, I'm thinking about $1,000 a square foot all in construction. Now, that's going to be different in different areas of the country. Obviously, I'm doing a project out off the coast of California for a critical access hospital now that is much more expensive than that. I'm doing a project in Iowa that's much, much lower cost. So we've got to be able to get an understanding of what it means in Apalachicola for you all in terms of that cost per square foot. Because if we look at something and say, yes, it's a 21,000-square-foot addition as we were thinking about in 2016, you know, is that $21 million today? Is it more than that? Is it less than that? Those are important things for us to think about. And I mentioned before, having a phased investment strategy, but within a long-range facility framework if we can't afford to do a full replacement all at once. Finally, the big questions that we always ask when we're doing a plan, are we just trying to scratch today's itch? We've got a problem in our emergency department, so we're going to fix that. Well, if we fix that, does it cause me other problems later on in the future? So I want to make sure that, again, thinking about it very holistically, having a long-term plan, understanding that market, looking at the assets that I have, matching that up against the needs of my community, the needs of my provider, maintaining my flexibility. And then, again, I keep looping back to that financing piece, is there an opportunity for the cost report to help us? Part of what I love about working at Stroudwater is that in working hand-in-hand with Wade and Jeff and the rest of our team, when we're doing facility plans, we're able to say, okay, if I make this investment and it's distributed in this way across departments, does the cost report help me more there than it would in something else? Medicare is going to reimburse its part in a critical access hospital. Who utilizes or what services within the hospital are more Medicare than others? Inpatient care. You know, we want to make sure that we're allocating as much of our square footage, as much of our cost, to the inpatient unit, not necessarily saying, let's have more beds than we need, but let's make sure that as we build out that plan, that we're thinking about the impact that the cost report might have. And finally, the last piece that I'll leave you with is when we're dealing with a limited site. And I don't know if in 2016, when you were looking at previous master plans, we were going to one side or the other of our existing campus, but we do want to think about what portions of that existing limited piece of real estate that we have. You know, there's some single-family homes around us. Where must I not put a building today to preserve my flexibility for the future? So that's really, master planning isn't just about building, it's also about what not to do. Jeff?
I really love the way that last question is framed because I know in my travels, and I know in your travels, JD, you've seen organizations that have built something exactly where they shouldn't, and then it ties them in knots for decades afterward.
Yeah. I mean, a slightly larger example, but one that always sticks with me was one of the first times that I did this type of project at Stroudwater, it was for a community hospital out in Idaho. They were about a 300-bed facility and had just opened up a parking garage. I didn't realize when I first got on-site that they had just opened it up. And I said, what's the biggest issue? They said, it's our emergency department. Fantastic. Here's where the emergency department expands. Just have to get rid of this parking garage. I said, well, we just opened it three months ago. Well, I'm not sure what to tell you, so now the emergency department has to go someplace else, but with it also has to go diagnostic imaging. And because the beds are currently above the emergency department, now we need to figure out how to get an elevator to go up and over. Well, it doesn't work that way, so now the beds have to leave too. So what could have been a $30 million project became a $300 million project because they had put something in the wrong spot. Want to try to avoid that. We can't afford, especially as a critical access hospital or a small rural facility in a small rural county, we can't afford to be wrong. We've got to make sure we're making the right investments.
Great. Well, one of the snippets of conversation we've had previously was around this question of partnering. And this is one part of a larger puzzle, really around what is a sustainable model that will meet the health care needs of Franklin County into the future? And so there's certainly a facility component to that and an investment component to that. There's an operational and financial component to that. There's, you know, attracting and retaining providers. But one part of that puzzle may very well be what kind of a partnering arrangement in the future should we be looking for? And in our experience, you know, the highest ideal is a locally owned, locally governed, adequately resourced, thriving, independent, local health system. Now, there's a lot of qualifiers I put in front of there, and sadly, in today's environment, it's difficult to be able to check all the boxes to achieve that. There are some communities and some systems that are able to do that based on demographics, based upon the community support, based upon a lot of decisions that have occurred, and the size of the community. But for most organizations, and you can see here, 90% of the hospitals we encounter are kind of in the middle, three options here, we're really grappling with three options in the middle, which is, you know, a good partnership as an option, hopefully sustainable. That's probably the second most idealized outcome. In the middle, you've got where the vast majority of hospitals are. They're somewhere lower than sustainable long-term. Their operating performance isn't where it needs to be. And there's some serious questions about their long-term direction, sustainability, what will be required for them to continue over the next decade or two. We call this kind of the strategic drift area, where they need to figure things out operationally and strategically. This is frankly where a lot of our clients reside and where we focus on helping them get closer to that thriving independence, which is where the majority of our clients reside, or if necessary, finding a good partner. Then from here, we get to the left-hand side of the slide, and these are the less idealized outcomes. And clearly, a bad outcome is a bad partner or a bad partnership. And we've seen those. We pride ourselves on mitigating partner risk as part of our conversation, and that involves selecting the right partner, strategically-aligned partner, getting the right structure that addresses your needs, and getting the right contractually independent. that addresses your needs, and getting the right contractually-enforceable terms to that partnership, so that you can enforce the terms of the partnership. And if they're not delivering, you have a Plan B and recourse. The last outcome, and sadly, it's all too common, with 130-some-odd hospitals in the last decade closing. And this, you know, can be devastating to a rural community and the residents in it, and is certainly the outcome we want to avoid at all costs here. So, but we are in a high-risk environment, and there's a lot of headwinds. And we want to be pragmatic about things. Just, I'm not going to get into the super details on this, but I would just say, as you contemplate what a partnership could look like in the future, you're not necessarily limited to what you've had historically for a management or other kind of partnership. There are a range of options, and the option that's right for your community really is around your objectives and the risk profile of the organization and what it needs to be successful going forward. So, a significant range of options. I would add that in the state of Florida, there are certain regulatory matters that you want to be aware of as you contemplate partnership options. For instance, at least as of relatively recently, if you were going to sell a community-owned or county-owned hospital, it required a public vote. And so, some organizations, if they feel they need to find a partner that is at that far end of the spectrum, have opted for long-term leases as an alternative, because a vote can be something that's disruptive and a challenging hurdle if that is the right option. And I want to be clear here, we are not drawing any conclusions as to what the right option would be, whether a partnership is necessary, and what kind of partnership might be necessary going forward. That work would need to be in outgrowth of any engagement. So, stepping back a little bit, it's really important to understand, and I think J.D. and Wade have covered this very nicely, there are a whole slew of unique, we call them value levers. These are sources, opportunities that create operational performance and value for a rural health system. J.D. mentioned cost-based payments, but there are others here that you can see listed. All of them are potentially important. I believe you have two rural health clinics currently. Making sure that those are optimized, that you're taking full advantage of those opportunities. And in the case of partnership, if you have a conversation, making sure your partner recognizes those value propositions as well. In our travels, we've found many partner organizations that don't recognize the intrinsic, enduring value of rural health systems. They don't understand many of these mechanisms, because that's not the world they live in. And so, it's really important that for your future direction, sustainability, viability, A, that you optimize these opportunities for your local health system. And should you elect to partner at some point in the future, that any partner, when they come to the table, that partnership arrangement reflects this value, and you're seeing a return in value to your community that reflects your intrinsic value as a rural health system. So, that's really it for us. There's just a brief snippet here about all the different services we offer. And I guess what I would say, we won't go through these, one of the things we pride ourselves in, you've met three of us today, two very senior leaders, and also a subject matter expert in rural hospital and critical access hospital operations and finance with you today. But we have a team of subject matter experts across disciplines that we can tap into. So, as I mentioned, whether that's doing a debt capacity analysis and understanding the intricacies of the USDA financing process or other vehicles, that can be brought to the table as may be appropriate. Alternatively, one of the key issues we've heard is that, you know, retaining, attracting and retaining providers to the community is key. And we have folks that are expert at alignment, is the term of art in rural healthcare, but creating an attractive environment for recruiting and retaining providers that is both compliant from a regulatory perspective, but sustainable from a financial and operational perspective. So, that's really it for us. We want to turn it over to you and allow you to ask questions of the Stroudwater team, and we're at your disposal.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for Michael, if you don't mind, to get up and explain to the public what we're doing and why we're doing it, and how we got to where we're at. Because some of the public have been asking me, you all are listening to these consulting companies, but is there a RFP or RFQ? You know, so, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
I don't mind at all.
Do you mind him?
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to do it? You want to do it?
Either way.
Oh, you can do it. Either way.
It started basically from when, what was Ms. Mary's name? Mayhew?
Mary Mayhew.
Yeah, that came from the Florida Hospital Association. We had a very good discussion with her, and in that discussion, she mentioned being able to give us some managers for some consultants to potentially interview. That's what we're doing here today, actually.
I think Commissioner Amos has asked her directly on the record.
Yes. And it aligns with our, to answer your other question, Commissioner, or to answer the questions that residents are having. The reason we are doing without an RFQ is because our policies and procedures allow us to do that for consultants and legal help. We don't have to do an RFQ. We can, you know, we select, we won't then negotiate rights from there.
And that's what they want to know.
Yes.
They want to know how was the process, what was part of the process, you know, and how it was going to go. And the board, I think several months ago, has made a decision to go forward with looking at leasing or selling the hospital, whatever.
Having a discussion.
And we feel like this is part of where we need to go to, to see if we need a RFQ or RFP or what. So, thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. This is the process that the board agreed to. We've discussed this.
I just want to make sure that the public knows that whatever this board is doing is above board.
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
And it is public information, so I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that.
Yes, Commissioner, we've addressed this at quite a few meetings, at open public meetings, this process that we're moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Everybody was satisfied with that. So, everybody's on board, and here we are. And thanks, Stroudwater, for their patience this morning.
Yes. Thank you all for being patient. It's been a long meeting, and we understand it. Trust me. Commissioner, do you have any, you know, any questions or concerns, based on the presentation?
That's a good sign.
It is a good sign. I will say, I will add something of clarification, and it was just, it wasn't really a main point you were making, but it's a statement you made in your presentation, I don't know which one of you was. So, according to Florida law, if this board were to try to move to sell our hospital, it would require a vote of the public. Is that what I heard, or is that wrong?
That is what I stated. We had done some work several years ago over in Vero Beach, Indian River County, and that was a district-owned facility. And we were specifically charged to help them with evaluating whether a partner was the right answer, right solution for them. And they opted to do that. And they opted to pursue a path with that partnership that allowed them to find a partner, but via lease structure that then would not require a public vote at that time.
Again, that wasn't one of your main points, but I thought I heard that said. And we've had so many things said over the years concerning our health system and our hospital. I just thank you for a clarification that we otherwise didn't.
My pleasure.
Yep. Anyone else? Mr. Jeff, thank you all very much for your presentations. We really appreciate it, and I'm sure we'll be in touch.
I have one thing.
Oh, you do? Go ahead.
What do we give up if we give up our critical access?
I'm going to let you answer that. Good. Wade, go ahead.
Yep. No, I can speak to that. So, if you give up your critical access hospital status, one of the bigger items that you would lose is what's called cost-based reimbursement. So, for Medicare and in some states Medicaid, they reimburse critical access hospitals based upon your total allowable cost. This isn't your total cost for the facility. Medicare has some strict rules about what constitutes allowable cost. But generally speaking, critical access hospitals get reimbursed for Medicare and should also be getting reimbursed by Medicare Advantage plans based upon their reasonable cost. And so, as a critical, as a critical access hospital, you currently have that. If you were to convert to a different designation, whether that's an REH or a PPS or, you know, whatever it might be, then you would lose access to that. You also, you know, depending upon the designation that you would select, you might lose access to other, I don't want to call them secondary programs, that might not be the correct terminology, but let's say you were to convert to, say, an REH facility. There are also implications around 340B. So, there are qualifications as a critical access hospital, and you qualify for the 340B program. Currently, as things are written, the REH designation would, it does not qualify as a 340B entity, and therefore, that would be something you'd lose out on. We generally see that as being a significant opportunity for critical access hospitals and all small rural hospitals. And again, there's nuance to that, but, so that's something to consider. And then, there are some other reminder pieces, but I think for the biggest financial changes that you would expect, those are some of the bigger ones.
And what I might add to that, just to put a little more, sharpen the edges, it relates to how it would impact your local facility. One thing would be, again, as I mentioned, if you did a major facility project, let's, for ease of math, let's assume a ridiculously affordable project, and I know it doesn't sound affordable, but for healthcare today, it would be, of a $10 million project, if half of your payment was cost-based, Medicare, Medicare Advantage, that would mean that half of the interest and half of the depreciation associated with that investment would be picked up on the cost report and paid for via increased payment. Nothing else would have to change. So, in essence, again, 50% of the interest and depreciation expense associated with that investment, if you were getting 50% cost-based payment, and we see, you know, 40 to 50% is probably where the bulk of critical access hospitals are, we would need to look at your specific circumstance to know the percentage, but you would get incremental payment that would effectively help you cover those costs. That's one very specific way that cost-based payment that you get via critical access hospital would benefit you. The other thing, and Wade may have to throw me a lifeline here and rescue me, just to make another example of how critical access can be really helpful, in an emergency department, the standby cost for the providers that you have there, waiting for people to come in with, you know, a laceration or a fracture or whatever it might be, with a critical access hospital, the cost of that standby time for those providers, when they're not treating patients, that's eligible for cost-based payment. So, again, you might get 40 to 50 cents on the dollar for the cost of having those providers who are, when they're not actively treating patients, picked up via your cost report. And again, that becomes a very significant benefit for operational and financial sustainability going forward. It's part of the give-and-take between evaluating a critical access hospital versus a rural emergency hospital, and something that, you know, we could certainly dive into in more depth, should we have the privilege of working with you.
Anyone else?
Okay. If we give up our critical access, that's like a two-part question. Part one, if we give up our critical access, could we ever get it back? Part two is, is there a grace period to revert back to it if we give it up, if we went REH?
So, the answer to both of those, my understanding is yes. However, so, yes, I'll leave it at yes for now as a simplistic answer. There are always caveats and nuances to that. One thing that we have seen happen quite a bit, actually, in the recent past, is critical access hospitals few are, they use the term grandfathered. And what grandfathered means, it means a whole host of things, depending upon the setting in which you're using it, but some critical access hospitals have been grandfathered into critical access hospital status based upon a certain period of time. So, as a certain date, if you're a critical access hospital and you were designated by the state, you can maintain that. If you switch, so if you switch designations and then say, would like to go back to critical access hospital status, what that will likely trigger is a evaluation by CMS to make sure that you're in line with the conditions of participation for a critical access hospital, and thus, there are mileage criteria, there are distance criteria, is what we refer to them as, for critical access hospital eligibility. You'll have to go through and essentially ensure that you're meeting all the conditions of participation under Medicare or critical access hospital designation. So, while, yes, in theory, that is possible, there are just some nuances that we want to be aware of. And then for REH, I, yes, there is a, you are able to convert back to your original designation, but again, we have to think about it, not just in terms of what it says we can do, but also any evaluation, any independent evaluation by CMS. So, there will be some scrutiny there.
Wade, if I might ask you a question, if they don't meet the distance requirements now, they were designated as a necessary provider, if they were, if the distance requirements weren't satisfied and they were to give up their critical access designation, that would be a roadblock for getting it reinstated, however, correct, at some future date?
Yeah, so, and I hesitate. So, for those of you on the call, I used to work for a local Medicare administrative contractor, which is basically a company that CMS hires out to administer the Medicare program. I'm hesitant to say anything with 100% certainty, because as I've been through the process before, you know, different areas come under scrutiny at different times within the Medicare program. And so, if the, you know, we see that a lot with the OIG, for instance, where they start to crack down on a particular area of Medicare, and then we see audit plans that are switching and whatnot. So, again, I think at the highest level, yes, we can look into those, but there are nuances to that as well.
Do you know the distance requirement?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Do you know the distance requirement?
Yep. So, it'll be 35 miles on what are considered primary roads, and then 15 miles on secondary roads. So, primary roads, and they actually just recently switched the definitions, or rather clarified the definitions. So, a secondary road would be a single lane each way, and then a primary road would be more than that. So, they have clarified that.
So, it looks like the one that we'd have to be thinking about would be in St. Joe, the Ascension facility is 18 miles driving, but whether or not that was primary or secondary would be the driving factor as to whether or not you would become ineligible to be a critical access hospital if you were to try, if you lost it or gave it up, and then were to come back and get that, as long as those 18 miles were secondary roads, then we might still be in the game. But if those 18 miles were primary roads, then that would be a bigger challenge.
Mr. Chairman, I got a quick question. That being said, being you just said the miles have an issue with the CAH designation, the hospital in St. Joe could not acquire our CAH designation if we gave it up. Is that correct? Would you be?
It would be, it would also depend on how close they were to the next nearest hospital. So, if they were further than 35 miles from the next nearest hospital, aside from you, and you were to go away, then in theory, again, we're talking very theoretically at this point, in theory, they could become a critical access hospital. But I don't know anything about them, I've not researched them. There are other conditions of participation inclusive. of participation inclusive of a cap of 25 beds, a four-day average length of stay, a whole bunch of other things that are limiting factors as critical access hospitals. So I'm not, I'm not aware of their current capacities at, at St. Joe.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to, if you don't mind, you said that they have changed it, because we've heard this twice now, that they've changed it to a primary road being a four-lane, secondary road being a two-lane. Is that correct? And it's a 15-mile on the secondary road. Is that, is, is that in concrete or is that in theory? I mean, we would like to know exactly what, what the law is with that. Because we get, I'm gonna be honest with you, it, it depends on who we talk to, we get a different perspective on critical access. I mean, we can't get any one individual that, you know, that, that's the same, or I guess, I mean, it's just, it's confusing. Because, you know, we're supposed to be talking to people that, that are in the field, that understand it and all, and everybody, it's like, everybody's got a different opinion on it. We would just like to know exactly what, what's what with it. I mean, it's, it's frustrating.
Yep. So, and, and I'm not, so I won't speak to the, the confusion around it. It is very confusing. The whole idea of primary versus secondary roads is a very confusing topic. And again, so CMS, I'll start off by saying CMS has the authority to designate a hospital as a critical access hospital, you know, Stradwater, X consulting firm, Y consulting firm, can't say 400% sure that you will qualify as a critical access hospital because we are not CMS. What we can do is we can look at the regulations that CMS provides, and then we can evaluate your situation and make an assessment as to whether we believe you all are in line with those regulations. And so the current regulations, again, state the 15 miles on secondary roads, 35 miles on primary roads. When we evaluate a hospital for critical access hospital feasibility, which we've done a number of those since the recent change in those definitions, we evaluate multiple routes, we go through, and we basically try and pick apart any scenario in which CMS could look at that hospital and say, oh, you do not meet these, these criteria, which are spelled out in, in regulation. And so there, there is a lot, it's a very confusing aspect of it. But we, again, rely back on those regulations that have been published, and we use that when we're assessing, you know, critical access hospital status for, for our clients.
And, and I will say, we, we don't have them on the call, but we do have two analysts that are experts in terms of mapping and using geographic information systems, and, and really have spent a lot of time, as Wade alluded to, looking at different road networks, and what segment of a road is primary versus what segments are secondary. And one of the things you can do, I don't know if it's relevant to your situation, is you might have a stretch of road that might be 22 miles long, and some component of that might be primary, using the revised definition, and some might be secondary. And what you have to do is total those up, and, you know, to see whether you meet the distance requirement. So that would be the kind of work you, you'd certainly have wanted to do in advance before you gave up a critical access designation. And one thing you'd want to keep in mind is the status of a section of road can change based upon what the State Department of Transportation or the feds decide to do with the road. So if you have a road improvement project, it can change what effectively counts as a secondary or primary road over time. And so in some instances, you know, what might have been eligible three years ago or five years ago can change based upon improvements that are done to a local road network. So unfortunately, there are a lot of variables, and, and it's a bit of a moving target depending on what, what's being done to the road network and how the regs are being revised. But the key change that occurred this, in the last year or so, was they changed the definition of primary to secondary road. The distance requirements, 15 to 35, didn't change, but the definition of what was a primary or secondary road did change.
And just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, just to clarify, the reason why we're asking this is, is because we've had a couple of gentlemen come in from two different companies that's wanting to, you know, partner with the county on the hospital. And, and both of their models is an REH. Now, one of those companies happened to also be the company that's been managing our hospital for four years under a critical access. And, you know, I asked them, I said, well, if it's, if it's so great, why are you wanting to change it when you want to partner with us? You know, I mean, that's, that didn't, doesn't really make sense to me. And I think that's what Commissioner Prumes is kind of alluding to, is if we do go to this REH model, you know, can we come back if it's not a good fit? And that's where we're getting frustrated because we don't understand it, you know, and we don't understand what our options are if we go that route. So that's, that's why we're asking about that.
What I would say is if there's a hospital within 18 miles of you, I would be very careful about giving up the critical access designation without understanding the full consequences of that, and, you know, what, what the implications might be for your options long-term. And so I would certainly not allow a third party to make that decision on your behalf. And I'd want to make sure that nobody had an economic interest in trading out your critical access designation so that they might have a business arrangement. I'm not saying this is the case, to be clear. I know nothing about the circumstances. But I wouldn't want somebody having a business interest in one of those other communities that might benefit from that, that choice, for, for one. But I do think evaluating critical access versus REH is important. I will say that as currently constructed, the REH designation has had a slow uptick. There, there certainly have been some, but it has not been as rapid as CMS was hoping. But every situation is unique and specific, and it certainly is something that, as part of a scope of work, we, we are very capable at assessing, you know, how do you qualify for critical access, what might be at risk if you were to give it up, and also, what are some of the trade-offs and quantifying the specific trade-offs in your situation between critical access and REH, some of which is influenced by, you know, your, your facility choices. The bigger, the bigger the facility investment you make, the bigger potential benefit from cost-based payment as it relates to that, that particular decision. So there's a lot of different variables that need to be weighed here, and, and obviously we, we can't opine on any of that until we've done, done the, the homework.
Yeah. The last thing I would just add is, as my colleagues have been talking, I've tried to do what I can to Google, you know, various locations. It appears as though the facility in Port St. Joe is only an 18-bed acute care facility. So their size is such that they sure would like to be a critical access hospital, I believe. They are too close to Panama City to become a critical access hospital. So, you know, that's the issue for them. If they were to move a little bit over towards you, they could become a critical access hospital if you were not there. But to the extent that you're there as a hospital, then that would prevent them from, from becoming a critical access hospital. If you were to drop to an REH, it is my understanding that they could then, by moving slightly closer to you, if they chose to replace at some point, get outside of the 35-mile criteria from Port St. Joe to Panama City, and then therefore become a critical access hospital for the Ascension system there. So again, that's just based on what I could do during this conversation, but something for us to certainly consider as we want to hold on to, potentially hold on to that designation for the future.
It's clearly a bargaining chip for you.
Going back to that, I mean, I don't know if y'all are familiar with the area, but there is a, it's much further, it's a two-lane road, well over 15 miles between Sacred Heart and Bay, you know, Bay County, or the Bay, Bay County Hospital, Bay, their mothership or whatever they call it. I mean, right now, according to what you just told us, they could, they could submit and, and qualify for critical access because they're well within, they're well over 15 miles on a two-lane road. And, and not only that, they're at a lower speed limit. I mean, it's not even 55 mile an hour between there until they get the Tyndall. So I mean, right now, according to what y'all were just telling us, with the criteria that's, that's now implemented or laid out, or whatever term you want to use, that right now, they could qualify as a critical access.
Yeah, that may, that may be something that because of the change in how the government defines primary roads, that now they're able to, to qualify for that, given their, their current location. And they could be sitting in their boardroom right now, deciding that that's the right thing or the wrong thing for them to do. I don't, I haven't looked at what the, what the size of the road is between here and there. That's what I need my analysts for. It's outside of my skill set.
But that, I mean, Sacred can deal with Sacred. We're, we're concerned with wings.
Yes, sir.
But, but one question I have for you, and it just seems like in your presentation, I may be wrong, that y'all leaned more towards independence. Y'all don't, I mean, y'all would, I mean, according to your, your slideshow there, you know, independence being the best scenario. With that being said, i- if, if we decided to stay independent, what's your recommendation on hospital boards? Would, you know, should the hospital board be an authoritative board, or should it be an advisory board? We've kind of had some back and forth with this over the years. I mean, I think we originally started out as authoritative, I mean, yeah, authoritative, and then it kind of blended into a, you know, like a modus operandi of advisory slash authoritative. I mean, you know, in the past, this commission, this board here has, has discussed the fact that we need to get politics out of medicine. And really, the only way I see it, and I may be wrong, is that we establish a good authoritative-based hospital board, possibly put it into a 501(c)(3). I mean, what's your, you know, what's your opinions on that? I mean, obviously, if you want to be independent, we've got to change up what we've been doing because we've been independent for a while, and it just, it ain't working. So what's, what's your thoughts on that as far as the hospital board itself goes?
So just two, two thoughts. I, I think we're, we're very pragmatic when it comes down to partnership versus independence. We, we kind of view the operating environment for health systems, rural health systems, as one that's full of risk. There sadly are no risk-free options. And so it's really about evaluating the operating and strategic risk of being an independent organization, which in some instances can be quite elevated, either because there's challenging operational performance, or, or challenging competitive environment, or any number of factors. And we have to, we have to evaluate that alongside the risk of partnership. Is a partner going to do what they said they were going to do? And really, our, our focus when we're advising folks on partnering is take, using approaches to mitigate partner risk, and select a partner that does the best job at addressing the standalone operating and strategic risk. So it's, it's really about managing risk. So we would need to know your situation better before we could, you know, recommend whether independence or partnership was, was the right option. I know you, you know, based upon the, the size of the market, some of the challenges that have been shared with us about recruiting and retaining providers to the community, the need for capital investment, all of those things are significant risk factors that you need to address. As it relates to governance model, I, I do think isolating hospital operations from political campaigns is, is probably a good thing. And so certainly, the most frequently used model for governance of county-owned or district-owned hospitals is that there's a separate board who may be appointed by the, the county or district board to stagger terms or some other mechanism. But as a way to insulate it from kind of the, the election season result in any given point in time. What I will say is that's not a panacea. We've seen in Florida, and certainly many other places in the country, where a hospital 501(c)(3) board and either a hospital district or a county board have gotten cross, at cross purposes. And there's, you know, when those types of disagreements become public, it's probably the worst outcome and the worst situation. Because then you've got two entities that are supposed to be in charge and eligible who are essentially fighting in public over the future direction of the hospital. And it's something that is incredibly disruptive to the community and the organization, and a distraction to both boards. So I think it's important to be really thoughtful and really sound. But I, I think, you know, the, the creating some distance from election season is probably a, a good idea. Avoiding a situation where you have a 501(c)(3) board and a county board at loggerheads is absolutely essential. And I think the other thing to keep in mind is, from a community perspective, is there sufficient interest in folks being on the board, and making sure that you have a quality board going forward in terms of the hospital board are, are obviously key considerations as well. But that's certainly something, you know, if we were working with you, we could advise and help look at some recommendations and alternative models for governance going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more question. Just out of curiosity, this goes back to the REH thing, but why, why did CMS create REH? Do you have any knowledge on that? I mean, I know I have my opinion, but I was just wanting to get it from you guys that are, that handle it more on a day-to-day basis. But I see smiles, so it must be a...
So you can, yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, and I don't know, maybe Jeff and JD have some secret insight, I, I don't know if we could say exactly why. What CMS has, my understanding of what CMS has stated around it is to provide additional flexibility to our rural providers, seeing that there has been a number of closures, as Jeff alluded to, over the past several years. And so the idea was to provide an option for those hospitals where it is a struggle to stay open in their current form. And the REH was a, it was a designation that was aimed at helping those rural facilities that are on the brink of closure and looking for a different way to operate. So I, that would be kind of my high-level synopsis of my understanding. But again, I don't have any secret insight into what CMS was envisioning.
No, I, I think that's a great response and, and the right response. I think what I would say, just based upon some of the conversations I, I've overheard or been part of, is that I, I think there's significant differences of opinion as to whether REH was the right approach in, in many policy circles. And, and I think, you know, there's work being done to see if it can be refined so that it's both a more attractive option for communities and, you know, more, more viable going forward. Because again, the uptake has not been what they, what they, I think, were hoping for. And so I, I would expect over the coming years that it might be refined. Whether those are meaningful enough to really change, change interest is, is a good question. I know that some of the conversations I've had have really kind of attacked whether, you know, one of the, I think, theories behind REH was that the inpatient beds are a significant source of cost, and if we were to create a designation that would get rid of inpatient, that might be good for the system and more sustainable or viable. I think there's differences of opinion as to whether that was an accurate diagnosis of, of the situation.
So they, they created REH to bail out our critical access?
More options.
Yeah.
More options.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time, though.
Anyone else? I will say this, just to wrap, kind of wrap things up. I know that one of our, whenever we choose who we're going with, one of our key things we're going to tackle is going to be this critical access versus REH. Now, just from a purely business standpoint, I know about cost reimbursement, all the different things we discussed here this morning, and have discussed over the past several years here at this board. I'm still finding it's going to be really hard, and this is just my opinion, to do better than a monthly check, which is what REH brings. Because all the stuff with REH is, or with capital accrual access is if this, then this, or if this scenario, then this scenario. So the REH is a check every month. I can tell you, for what I'm doing at my house and for my household, I would rather know for sure how much money I'm getting every month than think that, well, I'm doing, this month is slim, but next month might be better. But that's just my own personal opinion. I think it's going to be really... I think it's going to be really hard to outdo a monthly stipend of money.
Especially whenever you have, what was our average in-bed? Is it less than one or one?
It is, but the...
You know, so that's, that's what, you know...
But part of the designation...
It goes into that, those ifs, like you were saying.
Part of the designation with critical access, a lot of people don't catch this. We couldn't have a high number of beds. If we did, we wouldn't be able to be critical access anyway.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is your reimbursements aren't that high when you got that load.
One and a half ain't got much reimbursement.
Exactly. And so you kind of weigh out what's, you know...
Yep, but we'll see how it goes. Chairman, we do thank you for your presentations this morning. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate the conversation and the discussion very much. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bill Williams, let's talk about some housing.
Yeah, much easier.
Well, a bigger, it's a big fish, but let's talk about it.
We shift gears quickly.
Yeah, I know. It's, I know it's dinner time. I'm caught right in the middle of two healthcares. But, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Madam Clerk, Counselor, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm Bill Williams, the care coordinator with the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. And I wanted to come to you and tell you a little bit about sort of the projects that we're enrolling that we'd like for you to partner with us. About six months ago, the sheriff asked me and our team when we were walking around what was missing. And he started talking about what we could do long-term with the mental health and the substance abuse components of, of our facility. So we put together a project. We submitted for state appropriation. You guys gave us endorsement for that. We're very appreciative of the state. Didn't fund it, but the critical need is still there. And we were collaboratively working with the other three sheriffs. It was going to be a four-county operation. This is an extension of that process. We talked about initially the seven acres that we had behind the sheriff's office and what could we do with that. The sheriff envisioned step-down work reentry programs for some of our inmates going back to work. We talked about emergency shelter for homeless individuals, where stabilization and transport to Tallahassee was there. We talked about small manufacturing. And then we started looking literally across the street there and said, well, you know, and not being from Franklin, I said, well, who owns that? And they said, well, that's the school board. So I reached out to the superintendent. I've asked the superintendent, Billy Fuentes, to be here today in that dialogue that we've had because they play a very, very critical part as a partner. If you take, if you take State Road 65 and you look at the economic opportunity, the housing opportunity and the academic corridor that could be created by us forming what we're calling One Franklin, bringing the governmental entities under one domain, under a public-private partnership under Florida statute. The superintendent had exactly that same vision, looking at what he needed to do for his school system. He's got his bus barn, and I'll let him address all of that. But with his help, we reached out to Tallahassee Community College, which is now Tallahassee State College. They've committed to being here on that campus with a CDL and a heavy equipment mechanic program. So not, not that they're just building a bus barn, they're building an academic infrastructure for not only our inmates, for the citizens, for high schoolers, for folks to be able to work with it. So we're starting to see it enroll. And then when we started looking at the housing, which was our motivator to begin with, we've got critical personnel, you all have critical personnel, that we cannot afford to, to live here with the current crisis in the real estate, the prices, the Airbnbs, the things that are good in certain ways, but also they have an impact to the working and the critical personnel that we have. We can't get deputies, we can't get teachers, and again, I'll let him address his side. But when we looked at that property with a zoning change with you all, with the bus barn taking three to four acres in the, in the academic center, it'd almost be like a Southwood complex where you've got government wrapped up in and around housing. You could put 88 potential units. I wouldn't go that much, but that's how much is there. But you could build in there and have your critical personnel there, from teachers, firefighters, school paramedics, you know, people that work for road department, et cetera. Anybody that works in the government area would have an opportunity to come in and have that process. Then we looked again, you guys have 55 acres right down the side, and we'll, I, I, well, follow this. I'm not real good at following the script, but I appreciate you being there. No, no, no. This was our driving factor on the critical issue. We've got to take care of the critical personnel. They're going to take care of this county in the future. And across the spectrum, there, there needs to be that assistance. So I showed you, and you guys had a workforce study that was done by Florida Housing, I think in 2020, that showed a lot of statistical breakdowns. I didn't include that today. I know y'all have copies of that. But what are we doing to address that critical problem? Go ahead, Michael. Thank you. Basically, and in the back, I know that's small print, we've attached the actual stat, you don't have to look at it, it's just for demonstration. But basically, under that statute, Florida has some really good P3 or public-private partnership guidelines and state statute that allow local government to partner with the private sector as it determines. And again, we're very premature in that. If you guys want to come up, we'll get into y'all's section in just a second. But we started looking at the, the, the public-private partnership and why does it need to be there? Almost exactly what you were doing with the healthcare conversation a moment ago. It's about shared risk. You can't, you can't bring and become housing owners and developers and those type things, even though you've got the critical need. You start reaching out to the private sector from the management standpoint, from the construction, the engineering, all the different components that are there. And again, this is premature because we don't know exactly what direction this wants to happen. But these are the advantages of a, of a P3. Obviously, the risk sharing, you've got the partners, you've got the intellectual capital coming from all of your different partners that are there. And you don't lose control of these properties. You know, I know in the past, and I certainly heard, affordable housing or workforce housing, it's always been a, a, I guess, a bill of sale that didn't actually produce the way we wanted it to produce. The difference in this equation and the normal presentation that you would get with it is that you control this. You don't lose control of it. You have a representative, which I'll get to in a moment, that would ultimately control those properties, what you do with them, how we come in. But I'll explain that to you. Go ahead. You go to the next one, Michael. Come up, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Lanier has been a great partner. We did go to the school board and, and get their endorsement, and I'll let him talk to his need and to the vision of what he sees.
Well, it's almost afternoon, but I think it's still morning. So, good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you. Steve Lanier, Franklin County School Superintendent. Mr. Williams has done a fantastic job so far. We've been meeting for the last five months on this project, along with Mr. Billy Fuentes. And there's a great need, as you know, for a public housing for our, our schoolteachers, for our firefighters, our first responders and our sheriff's deputies. So there happens to be 25 acres that's just to the north on Highway 65 of the Sheriff's Department, which is available. That has been designated, set aside for a bus barn facility that we've been looking at for the last couple of years. The current bus facility is located over in Carebell, the old gymnasium, which needs to be torn down. We need to get out of there as soon as possible. But that's part of the project. Franklin County school teachers' average teacher salary is the second lowest in the state of Florida. It's $42,500. We're having a difficult time retaining teachers to, first of all, come in and interview when they realize the salary that they're getting. And then once they take the job and they get here, many of them don't last because they can't afford a place to live. And we're looking at this project, if it, if it's approved, if we get it going, now for there to be a place for our teachers to live. And that's my main goal right there, is to provide a, a place for them. Then we can get teachers that'll stay in the area and we won't have to worry about them moving out. So there's other things, other factors considered, along with the Tallahassee Community College coming in, providing CDL training. That's something that we've not had here. That's going to be a big boom economically to the, to the, to the county. That's, I believe, 330 hours of training for, to get the CDL license. They can go in, in partnership with us, in the bus facility. We can have classrooms set up in there. So there's a lot to it. We need to get it going. And the school board has already given their okay for everything to go forward. We've already designated one of our board members to be on this permanent board. And I believe you can talk more about that. But we're all for it at the school district, and we hope that the county commissioners are on board with it, too. We appreciate you listening. So, thank you.
Basically, next slide is just a, a graphic of what WIS can do. This will be open to the general public, but to have an academic campus here in Franklin County will be phenomenal. I do want to mention as well that Kim Bodine, the executive director with Career Source, met with our team as well. And we talked about the scholarship availability of putting these students through, initially under 10, the state requirements. They sent all that to us. President Murdaugh from Tallahassee State College sent his vice president down of economic development, and she worked extensively with us to try to put what, what they would need to pull this off. But we're real excited that they're willing to come. Go ahead, sir. Basically, you're, you're very versed with the property, but that's the 25 acres, 27 acres that adjoins the sheriff's office. I put that in so you could get a graphic. That first left quadrant in the bottom there would be where we are looking at the superintendent's vision of putting the bus barn and the academic center, then the housing in and wrapped up and around there. And again, that would be based on what his projections are for FTE, what he needs to meet the specific needs, if it's in, you know, if it's in science, elementary teachers, et cetera. But this gives him a massive recruiting tool to go get young teachers and/or retiring teachers that want to come in. Same thing with the sheriff's vision as we look, because we're going to continue to fight for this mental health and substance abuse program. We think our goal is to try to break that cycle of recidivism. So we believe that that's a phenomenal opportunity to have that as well. Go ahead. And then I'll answer any questions you go through. That's a quick graphic. And again, this is, this is just like what a developer do when you look at it. That's not ultimately what would happen, but that's what you could maximize the property on with a zoning change. And I think the important other component, Commissioners, is that when we talk about putting this partnership together, there is no impact to your tax base. None of these properties are privately held. They're all under governor, government domain. So you're not talking about any impact to your tax base. In actuality, when we start working formulas, and we'll get to how we, how to see some different visions on the property, we may be able to increase your tax rolls with a formula, so that we're going to come up with. Go ahead. This is where the sheriff's office and following our sheriff's vision, as all of you know, he's very committed to not only, I, I call it the front porch and the back porch. Front porch is he will arrest you if you're breaking the law. The back porch is he wants you to have the opportunity for rehabilitative services, therapy and mental health to break that cycle. What we're trying to do, the talent that comes through that jail is amazing, from carpentry work to plumbers to electricians. We want to be able to self-navigate and transport those guys and ladies into a different pathway. So we're looking at some tiny house living for them once they're released from jail, going in and working with Career Source to have those different jobs. We've talked about small manufacturing being back there. So we're teaching building trades, working with the college to have project management, and a small potential base for a homeless shelter in the process. And I've shown you our seven acres. Go ahead, go ahead to the next one. That's without a zoning change. You can see how that would be lined up. But again, the, the critical issue here is that we have assets to fix our own problem. If you do the zoning change, go ahead to the next one. You've got 29 lots back there that could be brought into the, to the process. And as this was all coming, there's that magical thing called infrastructure, water and sewer that you got to have. So in this five-month outreach, we went to Mr. Fuentes to look at what we could do in the process there. And the great thing is that you're already down to 65. Water and sewer is right in front of the sheriff's office. So what do we need to do to expand that into the process? You can go to the next one. And not only were they there for our infrastructure, as I worked with Mr. Fuentes and, and members of his board, looking at what they have in their acreage, they looked at affordable housing a couple of years ago and what they could do with those properties. The way we look at it, and you guys are going to put your emergency operations center there, we actually see a great opportunity to work with Homeland Security with some drone or cybersecurity expansion with the colleges that emergency shelter is built. So we have a different component that we could add through TCC to bring in more residents of training and opportunities for our kids. The federal opportunity zone, I wanted to mention that. I've mentioned that to a couple of you before. East Point is in a federal opportunity zone. That is set to expire in '27, but depending on the election, that could be continued. That's a massive tool of recruiting for this county, where we could find the right partners. It's all about capital gains. It's not about taxes that are coming from your folks. It's about them going through and sheltering those dollars over a 10-year period. So part of what this board would do was set up a federally qualified opportunity zone, and that board could then manage that and then recruit those companies to come in, looking at your 55 acres and others. But as long as they're in East Point, they're going to get that tax credit, and that's a, that's a huge scenario. I'd also encourage the board, as we get this on, to maybe look at the SIS or the Strategic Intermodal System, because we got to look at a, at a corridor up to I-10 if we're going to look at small manufacturing and getting that distribution and those logistic channels set up. So, you know, one of the requests is working with your staff, working with Michael, to be able to look at making sure that we're on the 2050 strategic plan and growth with the Department of Transportation. I think that's it on that one. And then we'll go to, go ahead. That's just the layout. And then with East Point Water and Sewer, not only the, the infrastructure, they, they've got 42 acres that can be brought into this equation as well. And we started talking about, and my, I'm going to come up. We started kicking around the idea of what, what, what they could do with the, the expansion of the emergency operations center. We talked about a staging area for Homeland, I mean, for FEMA, for Homeland Security, all the different things that could be wrapped into it, and then looking at jobs and training centers there. So I'll let him speak a little bit there, but we think it has a great opportunity for additional housing and additional components to the, the market that you guys want to pinpoint in the future.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman. If you recall, a couple of years ago, I came before you about workforce housing and, and going forward on this project. We were fortunate enough to be able to make a deal with you about the emergency operations center, which we did the three acres there. We still have 42 acres to develop. This plan and idea has come from many different things, but really, the availability of education and, and true workforce housing for the community is not only a, a huge potential for Franklin County, but for East Point Water and Sewer, it would be a huge boom to have additional services up that, up that way. The education component is critical. Where our areas are because of the acreage, it could be a staging area for FEMA. We have looked at the drone education projects, and we have also looked at just general infrastructure east through where we are. We already have a force main there and a water line that exceeds capacity. We really need to start moving water through there. So the growth there would be critical to, to help us out. But ideally, you know, we looked at, the original project that we came up with was 100 and, I think it was 186 units. But that was high density, which, I mean, we, you would still have plenty of green space, and it still left us at the time with an additional, I think we were going to develop 38 acres, and it would still leave us with an additional four acres to possibly do some other kind of facility there. So our, our idea is to grow this, and the more people we have on the system, the better it is for us. And then obviously, that provides usage for Franklin County, places to live, and that's the key component, is that we'd have the infrastructure already there in place.
You can go to the next slide. So basically, we think once we get, and I guess the specific ask of you today is to appoint a board member of this board to be a member of a P3 established board or a public-private partnership. We want to be able to look at all of the different revenue streams as that board then gels exactly what direction they want to go, what type private entities they want. We want to be able to look at Triumph. We think that this is a great project where all of the entities are falling under one domain to go after Triumph, state appropriations and/or federal dollars. So I think the, the collaboration and the advocacy that we could have in telling Franklin County's story on that 65 would be massive. So basically, those were our things that we were asking of and appointee today. You allowing us to engage your folks, your administrator, your engineers, your economic people, so we could bring them to the table and get your wishes and your direction on how you want this to unfold. And again, the cool thing is you'll have a representative, but they still got to come back to the board. And so you're not having to commit dollars, you're not having to commit anything. What you're committing and asking of today is intellectual capital. We need your leadership at the board, and we want you to be our partner. And with that, I'll answer questions and get ready for y'all to go to lunch. What, what kind of questions you have?
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. And, and this may be something that's down the road answered, but who funds this? Is this, I mean, I know you just touched on Triumph, but who funds the P3 and how?
When you look at the P3, the formation, and, and again... When you look at the P3, the formation, and again, it is going to be down the road depending on what direction you take, but to form the P3 costs nothing except some of Mr. Schuler's time on how we form it, make sure we're in compliance with Florida law. What we do, then do is look at what the infrastructure components. For example, we'll work, the superintendent's phase will go first, because he's got funding ready to go on his bus barn and his academic center. So the first piece that will come in will be that academic component, will be the bus barn and TCC. But the infrastructure layout, we would go to the state revolving fund, we would look coming to you with a CDBG probably for infrastructure expansion into that 88, or excuse me, that 27 acres. So that's stage one. Stage two, and then the individuals are buying the home. These aren't, I mean, like if a deputy or a teacher wants to come in, and we could do this multiple ways depending on what the board does, but I heard a lot of different feelings. A lot of people didn't want to lose control of the property, some people didn't want to manage the property, I was talking about in leaderships within the boards. But let's say that you want to keep control of the property. We're thinking about almost like a lease scenario with that, with that buyer, a school teacher, and it's tied to a CPI index, where they then have a formula that if they're there year one or year 10, they know exactly what that's going to be, but then that property recirculates. We do need some multifamily housing. The superintendent indicated that about 45 of his employees are getting scalped when it looks at the rental rates that are there, that if we had multifamily. So there has to be an operational arm. One of the things we talked about with the sheriff is having that up underneath the foundation, that we could hire the right people to bring in and manage those properties into it. But again, this would be a decision down the road, but right now, it would be like a project, almost like you did the Emergency Operations Center. We have the land, we're going to look at infrastructure, and then we're going to go. But this is not something, we're going to come back next week and say, hey, now that you signed up, here's a million-dollar tag. This is something that you guys will decide as a board with representatives of the five entities.
Do you want to ask any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I'll just say this. I have met with, I don't think the other, a couple of Commissioners have too, with Mr. Bill and some of the other, Billy. I think they contacted me just because I was, I'm in this, this is my district, this covers and encompasses my district. And I do think that, you know, with all this land, which I already explained, that that 55 acres that the county owned, we have discussed about that maybe potentially coming, potentially, a new humane society, but there's 55 acres, there's no way we would use all that. So, and that's hypothetical, but still, that being said, you know, we do have this, this, we don't have much county-owned land left in Franklin County. So we need to utilize what we do have. I know we all are passionate about workforce housing, so it's just one of those things where we're going to have to, whatever the best way to go about it is how we need to go about it. And I think that the only way to do it is to work together cohesively with the different entities to hopefully make it happen.
Great.
I will say this, just as a matter of public record, I've already informed the East Point Water and Sewer Board, which I serve on as a gubernatorial appointee, that any discussions or votes about this, anything to do with this, I will be upstanding at the East Point Water and Sewer level because I serve at the county level. Just serving anywhere.
Well, my thing is, I sure am glad that we're many years ago, this board designated opportunity. That was wisdom back then, because we, you know, yeah, for the future. And the future in housing for local folks and for the critical act, you know, the critical people that you get is few and far between. And I, yeah, I've got some other plans I want to hear talk about, too, about that, but that's in another day. Bill, you always give a good presentation, you've always done that. I've known you for many, many years. If you put your name on it, you're going to carry it right to the, to the end, you know? I know how y'all, but let's see, let's see how it...
So the big question is, who's going to be the P3 representative for this board at county? I just knew he was going to do that.
It'll be a fun ride.
I knew he was going to do that. That's why I asked, I saw him looking at me.
I will, I will be voluntold, no.
Look at that.
I'll do, I will be that representative only because it does encompass a lot of my district and as long as nobody else wants to...
I made a motion that we, uh...
I'll second.
I made a motion, we put Commissioner Vaughn, I always tease her about that, Commissioner Ward into the P3 group that Bill Williams is talking about.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Commissioner Sanders and a second by Mr. Amerson.
Mr. Chairman, can we just expand the motion to include staff support, too? As one motion?
Yeah. She needs your support, you got it.
So we, do you amend your motion to reflect that, Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
I amend my second.
You amend your second, okay. First and second have been amended to include also being able to have discussions and direction with staff about pursuing grants and other opportunities that go along with this project.
And I work with Mr. Schuler in regard to the legal structure, so you have regulations that we're complying with it. There were some new statutes just passed from advertising and the different things that you have to do when you select, and again, it's down the road, but who you select on the private sector side, so his access and knowledge will be great for this program.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, gentlemen, enjoy lunch. Any more?
Any other discussion before we, all in favor? Any opposed? That's your end.
Thank you, sir.
Bill, I've got plenty of questions, but they're all just premature at this time.
I'll come see you. And if y'all have any questions...
I'd just rather get the wheels turning and then we can address a lot of this.
Yeah, we're excited about it. I think the sheriff is really focused on trying to make this a great thing for folks from judicially involved all the way up to high schoolers that could come into, and with TCC coming in as our partner, I think it's the start of some really good things. So thank you for your support.
Mr. Chairman, I've talked to Mr. James Riley of Baker Tilly. He's prepared to go at 1:30, so we can go ahead and break for lunch now and come back at 1:30.
All right, let's recess.